Okay, all this meeting. All this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Begin by just saying pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation from the public. No one person attendant of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. So, thank you everybody for being here tonight. We have a lot on the agenda. I'll just kind of say for anybody from the public, we're going to go a little bit out of order just to kind of give you the order tonight. We're going to start with public input, then student report, and then we're going to go to our guests so we don't keep them for too long. We have members of the VOKE and the CIT here, and then we'll go to the regular agenda as posted. If we're going to begin with any public input, if anybody has anything they would like to talk about that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand, chat, unmute something. Okay, I hear nothing, so we're going to move on to the student report. Did not go through, actually, I should probably state for the record that all members of the school committee are here right now, so, and Dr. Daly is the superintendent and assistant superintendent, Mike Connolly are here as well. So we're going to go to the student report, and Chevy Street Pomp, I believe, is here with us tonight, back to 2022. Hey Chevy, hi Chevy, do you want to do the student report?
Yeah, of course, thank you. Just starting out with a quick rundown of some things that are going on in high school right now. To start out, we're in a lull between sport seasons. As of now, volleyball and cheerleading have started up on their practices and are working to find a safe way to continue doing that. In addition, all the fields have been cleared for football, and that season is expected to start up at the time. In terms of club activities, Team Care is working on the next project right now, and they are creating a card and a video message and compiling care packages for patients with cancer. In addition, the youth action team and social activism clubs are working together on a submission to the state contest to submit a PSA project around restorative justice. For academic matters, the SAT for juniors is to be held in early April at NRHS, and freshmen and sophomore course elections are underway, with junior course elections just closing. In addition, finalized AP testing dates have just are coming out as of now, and these dates are being modified to provide multiple testing options for schools to choose from. And finally, the MCAS for juniors, freshmen, and sophomores are also coming up, and juniors will be taking the MCAS this year to make up for missing the standardized test last year due to COVID. I also thought I would touch a little bit on some of the new plans that the school was implementing in COVID, as well as some student opinions and input on those topics. After asking some of my peers to give their thoughts on the start times, the overwhelming majority agreed the idea of keeping the 8:30 start time for the rest of this school year and into coming school years. And many students claimed that the later start time allowed them to go late to finish their schoolwork, and they were able to sleep in and not compromise on sleep. Students also made the case that it's really easy to adjust to a later start time as they are already in class to sleep in, but if we were to revert to the 7:30 start time at school, that going back to an earlier start time would be very difficult to adapt to. Another large concern with later school times that many people have expressed is that students would get out of school later, and that this would push extracurricular activities and sports to a later time. However, after talking with some student athletes, many said they didn't feel any negative impact of having later start times, and they support that policy. In terms of the new policy of returning full-time to school or staying remote and getting a hybrid model, many students did express some concern about large numbers in school, and some asserted the idea that there shouldn't be a rush to get students back to class this year. Although, many conceded that productivity in class would increase if school returned to increase in learning, and that if the state mandated the new change to be safe, that they would trust authority judgment. Another said that a stark change in schedule could be harmful for students who have gotten used to this so far, but also conceded that productivity would increase if we were back to the class. Kind of moving on from that really quickly, to wrap up, I was just going to mention a quick piece of work that my world history group worked on last term, and this utilized virtual learning with software really effectively. With a software that was able to simulate a museum experience, students were told to design their own well-researched museum exhibit pertaining to the Holocaust, and in a year where we couldn't have dioramas or political paper for exhibiting early, my peers agreed that this with a software that allowed us to work on this project was a fun way to do it. And that's kind of all I had for the student report.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Chevy? Excellent report, and I see that Dr. Daly got the message to you. I wanted to hear any thoughts on some of the things on the agenda tonight, so I appreciate the feedback and asking some of your colleagues. Yeah, Dr. Daly.
I just wanted to share, Shavani and I and the other student reps in the school committee discussed, we are working on a student survey as well that would look similar to what you sent out to parents and families, because I want to get the, I really appreciate the information she's collected, but I think we can do that maybe for all middle and high school students to collect some more information. So I've asked them to work with me to craft that survey. I know that one of our roles is to involve them even more in what we're doing, and I think they're excited to be a part of that process. So I appreciate what she shared tonight, and I think we can expand on that in the coming weeks.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, and as always, Chevy, you're welcome to stay as long as you want and weigh into anything, or if you have homework to do, that's fine as well. We're going to move on before we do reopening. As I mentioned at the beginning, I'd like to start with the members of the public that were invited for different topics, and so we're going to start with, we have some representatives here from the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School, and so, we have a number of people here, they would like to, I don't know who wants to speak first, but if you want to unmute, Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, hi, this is Judy. Again, I want to thank you for having us, we always look forward to this every year. I'm sure your biggest concerns are how we're doing with the COVID in regards to getting the school back up and running, and also where we are with the new school building project. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dave DeBarry so that he can address those questions.
Sure, thanks Judy. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great, great. So I also have James Baccone, our finance director, on with us, and Dr. Scuzzarella, our principal, she's here as well. My wingman and wingwoman, in case I get jammed up with some questions. But I think, you know, North Reading and Northeast are sharing a lot of the same issues, obviously with the pandemic, trying to get as many kids back into school as possible. Being very excited about the prospect of bringing more students back. Currently, we are a hybrid district. We have our students in about 50% capacity, and going into third trimester, we're going to try to increase that a bit and bring some of the vocational students in a little bit more. One challenge that we have, and we've had all along, is the transportation issue, trying to bus in all 1,200 students from 12 different communities, has been a challenge. As you know, there are certain busking guidelines now that make it difficult to, you know, to deal with transportation, but we're doing our best, and we look forward to getting our students in safely. So that's where we're at with the pandemic. Some exciting news is that we are underway, you know, we've been coming, I think, since Judy's first year as a representative, and it was a dream, you know, five, six years ago, when we said that we were going to do our best to maybe get accepted into the MSBA grant project, but not only are we now accepted, we're actually in module four, which is the schematic design, which is really our last piece prior to approval for the school. So we should know at the August MSBA meeting if our project is accepted, which we are fully certain it will be. It's more a matter of them looking at our designs and our estimates and letting us know how much the grant will be for. So, at our previous meeting with the MSBA, they approved the plan to allow us to build for 1,600 students. So right now, we have about 1,250 students. Because our waiting list was so great, it only made sense to try to build the school big enough to cut that waiting list down. Initially, we had hoped on a school that would fit over 1,700, but when we looked at the math and looked at the impact it would have on our communities, especially our inner-city communities where our highest populations, where we knew that it would be too challenging. So, after speaking to town managers and mirrors, and then presenting to MSBA, we've compromised the 1,600, and we feel that will dramatically cut the waitlist down and be able to build a great school. So we are very excited. It would be coming to a vote this fall. So after the August meeting, the MSBA will tell us how much they believe the school will cost. We, I will go to my school committee in September and ask them to vote to approve the project and to approve a bond to that project. I'm very confident they will approve that. At that point, the cities and towns have six days to meet if they want to vote against the project. So many of the cities and towns, when there is a regional project, if there isn't a huge impact, don't always go to a vote. Sometimes it's more costly to have a special town meeting than it is to pay the extra money per student. So we expect probably 50% of our cities and towns will have a town meeting or a city council meeting. If they vote yes, great. If we get a no vote, then we would have to go to a special election, a popular election, which we are prepared to do, because we understand to get a unanimous yes vote from 12 cities and towns is a challenge. However, we feel pretty confident when we, you know, explain the needs we have and the fiscal impacts that we will be supported, but in case we're not, we are ready to go to an election. But it's very exciting. We're just beginning the process, we're actually designing the details of the actual school, and I know North Reading very recently went through a similar situation, and you know how stressful it can be, and I've toured the North Reading High School a couple of times in middle school, so I've had a lot of our ideas for our plans is going to be based on a few things I'm stealing from your school, and I'm sure you won't mind about that. And if I can open up to any questions or any comments from any of us, that'd be great.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. DeBarry. I'll ask a question or two, and since I know we have masks on, nobody can tell who's talking, I'll try to. This is Scott Buckley. First question is just, you mentioned the transportation challenges with COVID, but with a vocational school, I would assume that there'd be a lot of additional challenges versus a traditional high school, because aren't a lot of the programs hands-on, and how have you been able to deal with a hybrid approach with some of the programs that you run?
Yeah, well, you know, surprisingly, because vocational shops are required to be much larger than classrooms, when initially, when we went in to do our three to six-foot measurements, we were actually fine with all of the vocational programs. We had to put plans in place, obviously, if students were using tools, we had to change our policies and procedures. We ordered some special touchpads that they carry in a lot of hospitals and operating rooms that would kill germs instantaneously, so we had those special, you know, they look like stickers, but again, they're for sanitizing, and we were able to put those on doors, on equipment, on tools. So, believe it or not, it's really been the lunch facilities and the smaller classroom space that caused us the largest challenge other than transportation as far as getting the kids in.
Excellent, excellent, and then, everything about the new project sounds great. My only other question is, the last couple of times you've been here, you've spoken about the summer program and kind of like the introduction, is that, is the plan still to run it this year or not?
Yeah, we did, we ran it virtually, and amazingly, we probably had our highest number of applicants who attended the summer program, and parents were thrilled at that point, because what we had done, which was a little different from a regular summer program, is we actually made kits up for all of our incoming ninth graders that had all of the supplies necessary and the tools necessary to do hands-on projects at home. So for parents to see kids actually working on physical things and not just staring at a screen, listening to instructor, I think it brought a little bit of an excitement on, you know, coming into Northeast in the fall, knowing that even if we do have to go remote, that the students will be active and not just, as we all know, staring at a screen. And so it was a huge success. I was as shocked as everybody, but it's definitely not going to be as good as what it's going to be this summer when hopefully we get the kids back in here and start working again.
Any else have any questions? Janine, Janine Embriano.
Hi, I just wanted. Oh, sorry, I forgot about that. Hi, I just wanted to say congratulations, I'm glad that you guys have gotten this far, and I hope it goes through.
Thanks so much, Janine.
Mr. Connolly.
Great, thank you, hi. Good evening, this is Mike Connolly. I just wanted to mention, well, take the opportunity when we have each of you here, that you recently, just this past week, your team of, with Richard McGinnis and David Fabrizio have, with the students have started to work on our adult project down in the softball fields. So, I know that was because of the pandemic delayed about a year, but we are so pleased to be partnering with each of you in that effort, and it's been exciting to see that project get started and see some activity down there. Very confident that it's going to be a very successful project and a significant upgrade for that facility and for the softball, not only the Marstee University freshman teams here, but for the community as well. So I just, I did want to just take the opportunity to thank you and your team for working with us on that and kind of persevering and staying with us as we work through the pandemic and the delays and the challenges, so it's exciting to see that project take shape this week.
Great.
I would like, I don't like to comment on that, I'm excited about them doing that, and that is something that this school committee, the Northeast School Committee, is really adamant about doing projects in our cities and towns, and we take great pride in that, and the kids get really excited about doing it too. Am I right, Dave?
Oh, absolutely, and I actually got a call from, you know, one of the consultants who is looking forward to a press release or some sort of news article about the two school systems collaborating like we are, so, yeah, so stay tuned for that, I hope to see that in one of the North Reading newspapers pretty soon.
Thank you so much.
Excellent, okay, no more questions. Thank you very much, everyone, and good luck on the project, and keep us posted.
Okay, thanks, everybody, take care, stay safe.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Judy. Okay, so moving on to other guests, I believe we have somebody here from the Community Impact Team, guessing Amy Luckwitz, although I didn't see her, Amy, are you up, you're under North Reading. Hi, Amy, proud BC grad as well, so I'll turn it over to you.
I think Dr. Daly actually has the presentation, unless you need me to show it. I'll just get started, so if you can believe, we are fully in our fifth year of the Drug-Free Communities Grant Program. This is something that has had support from the school committee since our application, actually, so going beyond five years. And I wanted to first give you a very brief update about what's going on with that grant. It is set to expire at the end of September of this year. We are planning on reapplying additional five years of funding, however, unfortunately, the grant was set to release about four weeks ago, three weeks ago, and it still has not been released by the feds for application. They have reassured us, though, that it will be available to apply, but of course, we're not guaranteed that additional funding. It will be a competitive grant again, and so as a backup plan, we are hoping to propose incorporating our full Drug-Free Communities budget of $125,000 into the town budget, but that won't be discussed until October town meeting. So that is our contingency plan. And Dr. Daly and I tonight, we're just going to review with you our request to implement the core measurement survey. Just as a reminder to everybody, this is information that we collect every year, and it shows, basically, it's very difficult to measure our work, except in this area. We're able to collect data about grades six through 12 each year. It also reflects the work that the volunteers do through the coalition, and I have to mention Mrs. Embriano, who has been a very active member of the coalition for many, thank you for waving there, very active, and it's been great to have the participation of the school members as well. Cynthia Conan is facilitating a project for us right now to assist getting education into fifth grade on vaping. So, back, sorry, back to the core measurement survey. Each year, we are required to collect data across four substances, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drug use, but in North Reading, we feel that we need to separate vaping into its own, whereas the feds don't send in with nicotine, we've talked a lot about that over the past few years. We actually collect data across five substances. We have four questions that we are required to ask. The first is your past 30-day use. The second has to do with perception of risk or harm, so basically, if you were to take these substances, do you think you're doing, or to how much, what degree do you think you're doing harm to your body? And the third and fourth questions are related to your perception of what your parents or adults would think if they found out that you're using, and what do your, what would your peers think if they found out? And this all ties into, scientifically ties into, an increased probability of a student using. So if conditions were favorable in the home that, you know, they felt their parent would think no big deal, let's say if they use marijuana, or their peers thought it was very common to use marijuana, for example, that student would be more likely to use. So this is why we collect that data. It's also important for us that we look at first age of first use, so what age did you first start using a substance? And this year, we are significantly scaling back the survey. Last year, average amount of questions, it was slightly different for middle school and high school, it was around 33 questions total, and this year, I believe, we're going to be doing 16 questions. Of the 16, though, I believe 11 are unique, and the reason that's a different measurement is because sometimes when you scroll down on the survey, we separated a question into three, just so that the student would have to go up and down to see what the possible answers might be. Dr. Daly, do you want to talk about the implementation plan?
Sure, just trying to bring it up on the screen, but I'm having a little trouble. But we are planning, the high school has already sent out a form for the staff, just proactively, because they do, based on some upcoming events, they want to try to have this take place next week. So they've sort of sent out information, this is the possibility, if it's pending approval tonight, would be the opt-out provision. The middle school is looking to do this sort of the week of the night, sort of come up with that. So we have plans to roll this out at multiple grade levels. I know that it was important for us to get students both at middle school, but also at the lower ninth grade, also the upper, both. We have a plan to get additional students at all those levels. Pending approval tonight, I did share the questions with you and some of that information. We, in the past, added additional questions to the survey, this year, we did not, we kept it streamlined to what is coming from the group, and it's already deep within that business. Again, I know there's always a question about is there an opt-out provision, there is, it's very clear, it's a Google form, folks can fill out, we've had some come in already, so I know that it's working, that will come from middle school soon, and it's starting in high school. And the second thing being, the principals are both very comfortable with these questions, they vetted them, and we view them as a very much.
Thanks, I'm not sure, I couldn't hear you entirely, but I'm not sure if you added that the student has the option to begin the survey, stop it at any point, or even skip questions, I'm not sure if you mentioned that, I couldn't hear very well. I just want to add two more things, the importance of we need this information now, and the first is because it will be used in our application coming up as soon as it gets released, but the second reason is because last year during COVID, we got such a poor response in terms of quantity that it was not reliable data. So we like to take this information every year, of course, and so we are going to have a gap from 2020, and so we're very interested in seeing what the 2021 findings are, especially because probably the number one question I get asked in my job is, is student use of whatever substance up, down, steady, and, you know, of course, their social life has very much changed, and my answer is always, I don't know. I don't know until I get this information back and can give you a comparison versus 2019. So I appreciate it, and I'll stay on if you have any other questions.
Well, you took my first question, so, anybody have any questions for me? The only question I have is an odd one, just because somebody has reached out to me about getting involved, and I mentioned the Community Impact Team, and so I don't know, if somebody wanted to start getting involved in Community Impact Team, or, you know, even like the K-12 Committee that I was on, how would somebody reach out, reach out to you, is there an email?
Yeah, great question, we actually just had somebody reaching out, so I wonder if it's the same person, and my response back is, is this a student or an adult? Because we do have volunteer opportunities for both students and adults. If somebody is a student and they want to become involved in the youth action team, they can contact me, and I'll connect them to the Youth Services Director, Jen Ford, who oversees that. If they want to join the coalition in general, that's what Mrs. Embriano is on, I have an application for that, and so they can just reach out to me, my email, my easiest email without my last name is coalition@northreadingma.gov.
Perfect, thank you very much. So, do we need a motion to approve the Community Impact Team surveys for this year?
I believe so.
Okay.
I would like to take that motion to accept the Community Impact Survey for the middle school and.
Second by Diana, roll call vote, Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Fred?
Hi.
You as well, pass this by zero, thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it all, and of course, we share with you first the results.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the guests we have tonight, so we're gonna go back to the top and go to continued business. We actually have some people here tonight, I'm guessing many want to hear about the reopening, especially with some of the news coming out from the state level, so Dr. Daly, I turn it over to you for reopening update.
Are you sure that I'm here to see who gets off the facility's master plate?
It could be the budget, Mike Connolly's a pretty good fellow.
So, of course, I'm sure there's a lot of folks here to learn more, we're going to just provide our updates as we. Mr. Papa Vassili, I just wanted to check if you were here, us, or was it an audio issue with our speaking?
The issue was that whenever somebody that's not present in that room speaks, the speaker in that room was slightly feeding back into the microphone in that room, so it was a little, I could hear probably 90% of things. It's not that any one member, but you have, what I'm saying right now, broadcasting, and you also have a live mic, and sometimes it was picking up on that a little bit, I think, from our guests.
Okay, it should work pretty well, we've done this a lot with the speakerphone, so thank you, I just wanted to clarify. So, a few things I want to update on, obviously, we have been following through with our COVID-19 testing, we have successfully implemented pool testing for the past two weeks, we started last week with all of our staff that had registered. This week, we did a pilot with any student groups, we ultimately, all students who had enrolled were able to participate this week. We weren't sure, we wanted to scale it up, but we were able to do all students that were enrolled as of Sunday night, there's some that have come in this week that'll be included next week. All of our pools have been negative, we had a couple of pools that were invalid with staff that we learned what was wrong, someone had put a, you know, if you put the Q-tip in upside down or something, you can invalidate the pool, you know, so it just, it's taught us a few lessons, and that's really why we did this, to scale up. The program has been extended through April 18th, which is wonderful, so we, that is covered, our plan is to continue it through that full. Our plan is to continue it through that fully funded by DESI timeline, and we do not have plans to continue it after that point, and we certainly hope by that point, many of our staff will be vaccinated. Obviously, the students will not, but, you know, our fingers are crossed with the announcement yesterday, that staff will be able to be vaccinated beginning on March 11th. Some are able to get their vaccinations a little bit earlier, but that is very welcome news. We've been trying to advocate for that in many different ways, through letters to legislators and Governor Baker, the commissioner, through our superintendent association, through joint letters that I've shared with the union leaders. And we feel that this prioritization, you know, the teachers were the next group, but this certainly moves them up. They are the only group, really. And it's all educators and all staff in the schools that are able to come in. And that certainly has been made very clear, that this is not a prerequisite for reopening school, but it is certainly something that we think is an important step to bring everyone's safety and concerns, you know, the anxiety around safety down. And pool testing also does that. I think that assurance that you've now been tested, and your pool came back negative, and certainly many of the others in the building also in that same situation, is very comforting news. If you, you know, the last time we were meeting, we were talking about just the large numbers of cases that were being reported, and was an overload. We were talking about needing to close a school. We were talking about some risk of transmission in school. So a lot has improved and changed in just a few short weeks. I'm very confident that as things move forward, and it starts to get warmer, and more folks are vaccinated, things are certainly heading in the right direction. The district, the town, has been in the red to the yellow. It's sort of went back and forth a few times. We are heading in the right direction and continuing to have very low cases. We've had only one case this week and one case last week, and I still have one to report from this week. But that's really very positive news with our numbers. So we are, you know, I'm just gonna bring you through a little bit of where we are with this process. So for quite some time now, I've been speaking with the teachers' union leadership and other union leaders about the possibility of a return, what that would look like, what it could look like as these things started to fall into place. So we've been in a very good place as far as having those conversations. We feel that our model as designed is adaptable, and we really designed it that way from the outset, that if we ever had to shift to full remote, or if we ever had to shift back to full in person, the way we've designed it, the way we've set up our classes, it will not be that difficult to make those shifts. There are some major hindrances that we need to still work out, the biggest of which is lunch. So the biggest hindrance, the two, were busing and lunches. So when we first talked about this a few weeks ago, we discussed, you know, in the survey that I sent out several weeks ago, if you recall, was, you know, would you be willing to come back at less than six feet? And it was overwhelmingly, it was close to 70, 30, it was 65, you know, around there percent, saying no, they weren't comfortable there, especially when you factored in that people that were on the bus might not be able to take the bus. The bus guidance has been changed, and it essentially has been lifted to allow more students on the buses. So that was the first hurdle that the guidance at the state level was able to clear up. Lunch is still something that, it's certainly a problem that we're going to work on to solve, but what folks need to understand is, in order to bring students back, we will have to be at less than six feet with masks. And so in order to do that successfully, I think we can do that in the classrooms. There are some challenges, though, whenever that mask comes down. And whenever we have seen transmission in our schools, it's been in situations where someone's mask was not on. In a lunch situation is where we've had the most concern. And again, it's been a very small number of transmissions out of over 100 positive cases of students in our district that have been reported. There's been three or four where there could have been some transmission in school, and that all occurred when masks may have not been fully up. Certainly at the younger levels, where that's more of a challenge, and then also at lunch. So a concern is, if you're at less than six feet, and anyone has a mask down, now there's a vulnerability there. So we are awaiting some guidance on that as well, as we make our plans and try to figure this out. I just want to share, and I will share later, some correspondence with the school committee that we received. But we had the time on learning survey from the state, and the time on learning survey from the state identified districts that may not, with their current models as designed, may not be meeting the requirements. This goes back a few months. And so many districts, because of that, had to start making changes to their model. So their hybrid model, or their remote model, was not meeting the state requirements. And so many districts were developing plans and getting them pre-approved by school committees to change their models, and to bring in more folks because they were dismissing too early, or they were having too much asynchronous time. We always met, our model and our design always met, our hybrid model always met with the highest standards, and so we did not have to have those models. And so some of the districts that have already announced changes and plans to bring folks back are doing that before they've seen the guidance from the state. And hopefully that, you know, I wish that that works very well for everyone. Where we are at this point is, we are collecting data from families. We're going to get an announcement tomorrow from the commissioner. He's going to present to the Board of Education. And very soon thereafter, I'm hoping tomorrow, but maybe it'll be a little bit later, we will get the official guidance on what all of that is. That said, we can read between the lines and see where this is going, and so our principals have been working very hard already behind the scenes to try and prepare our classrooms. What most likely will happen tomorrow is, the commissioner will talk about elementary school first, K through 5, that remote and hybrid learning is no longer acceptable for time on learning. I want to be clear from the outset, there will be a provision for anyone who chooses to remain in full remote, and that most likely will be folks who have pre-existing conditions or other vulnerabilities, who have COVID, who are in quarantine. They will be able to access the school, and that will continue to be an approved method for learning, at least through the end of the school year, June 30th. That's what will be clear. What may not be allowed is any other type of hybrid or remote. So there may be exceptions. Many districts are in very different places, but for elementary, there will be an expectation of returning to school in early April, and I'm not sure what that date is, and we will adjust and move from there. And as you know, for elementary, for us, we've had kindergartners in all year for five days a week, and that's not the norm. So we've had that already. We've been working all year to try to have first grade in. We've never been able to quite get to that place, because the way we were able to do kindergarten, we had to use multiple spaces. So we were never able to replicate that for first grade. We are actually making some adjustments to kindergarten, so that we're going to consider to try to, you know, we could possibly start bringing some of our younger grades in earlier, and depending on that timeline, we may, you know, our plan is to try to start bringing more students back as soon as it's absolutely safe. We would be comfortable saying that, you know, if the commissioner comes out and says that elementary would begin in early April, that that would most likely be our plan as well. What I believe the commissioner is going to say is, that there will be some flexibility with middle school and high school. My recommendation at this time, and I'd love to hear more from the committee, I think that our model lends itself to having middle and high school back as well. So I think that we can begin to discuss what that would look like. We may phase it in. We're going to come up with a plan that works well for us, for North Reading, that makes the most sense. But I think we all agree that the best place for our students to be is in-person for their learning. We will support them when they're at home. There will be some changes, possibly, to what the remote model looks like. We certainly, we've already had some concerns about, especially with some of the older students, we've had a separate high school forum, where, you know, were students necessarily home for the right reasons, right? So it was designed for the students to be in remote, to keep our numbers down, but we've had situations where there are three or four students in the class and 17 at home, and, you know, eight or nine of those that are at home might be there because, I'll just say, maybe they, you know, they overslept, and they felt it was easier to work from home that day. That's really not what the design ever was for the model. The model was, some students are in person, some students are at home, and if you're sick, stay home. So obviously, if you're sick, that's a different story. But we do need to think about whether, what that looks like moving forward, because, you know, at some point, if you're sick, you might have to miss the day. Like, we might have to go back to that kind of thinking, because we do want to make our focus on the students that are in front of us. So we do need to think about some of those things, and no matter what comes out with the commissioner, we certainly have to bargain certain aspects of this impact with our unions and make sure that we are in plan. But preliminary conversations that we've had, I think we all have a common goal, and we're going to work together on that. So that is not really a concern, but it's certainly something that we still need to continue to work on. So I wanted to share some of the results of the survey that we have put out. Again, very different from the original survey, you know, things have changed, and let me just share a little bit of where we are. So some of this, we will come back to later in the evening, but this first item is about a return to full in person, and the question is about, you know, I want to be clear as well, that in the survey, we didn't give the option about remaining in hybrid. We did that on purpose, because that may not be an option. It may be, you know, some may need to be in full remote, and others would need to come back in person. So with those two options, out of the respondents, and we had, at this dipstick, I see 1,162 responses, which, that covers a good amount of families. We have about 2,500 students, a little bit less than that, and many of them have siblings. So 1,162 is a very high response rate, and we had about 400 within about 30 seconds. So I think people were waiting for this survey to come out. But as you can see, it's about 90% of folks have indicated that they would return full in person, and they're comfortable with that. There is, you know, the one number in all of this that I'm a little concerned with, there is a, you know, 10% that have said they would switch their child to full remote. So what that means is, those are students that are right now coming in a hybrid that would go into full remote. So that's a fairly high number of respondents. I'm thinking that maybe with more information, those folks may be more comfortable coming in person, and if there is any option for anything in the middle, is some kind of hybrid, then maybe they would stay there. Mr. Popovich? One quick question on that. So was the survey sent to everybody? Because, or could this event people that are full remote right now that were filling that out? This question was only sent, so this was aggregated by cohort. So this is A, B, and C answering this question. Yep. The second question is specifically for those with folks in cohort D. Now, the one place where it could be a little divergent is, because I did say, if you have any students in D, there are some folks with one child in D and others in, so, but we do have on this, 66% said that they would remain in full remote, but 33% said that they might send their children back if there was a planned place. So you would get some students back from full remote. It's about, you know, survey-wise, it's about 30, 40 families, as opposed to 100-plus families on the other survey. So it'll be interesting, and that's one of the pieces we needed to look at. We will need to get some more actual data as we really try to figure out how to make this work. One thing that's been discussed, you know, we want to be the least disruptive we can possibly be for students. I think if students either opt into full remote that aren't in there now, or choose to remain there, at elementary, there's a possibility that their teacher may change. That's something that we've discussed, because in order to prioritize the in-person learning, we may, we want to keep those classes together, but we may have to find a slightly different solution for those that are choosing full remote. It's not ideal, but I think for the big picture, that might be the best scenario. So that's not official. That's not anything we've decided upon, but it's something we've discussed, because we really do want to prioritize the in-person learning at this time. So we will make, if that is the case, it'll be the least disruptive it can possibly be. There were some other items that we'll talk about a little bit later, but I will just share now with the school start times. We had some questions there, as we talk about the calendar later and school start times. There was a good amount of support. You can see it's almost 90%, you know, 30% in favor of the change, and then a large percent, 63%, who are, are not concerned either way. This is really about trying to take the early and the late schools and keep them at the same place. I will say that if you don't have a child in elementary, you're probably going to answer that it doesn't affect you either way, right? But not a lot of people that are saying to stay with the current model there. And then the real question about the start times is below. 57% saying they're in favor of a change and would like to see it continue, and 28% saying it doesn't matter either way, and then there's 13% saying that we should revert to the previous schedule, which would have had the elementary schools starting later than the middle high school. More to come on that. There's a lot of work, you know, we're gonna talk about it later in the evening, but I will just say, for those that are on at this point, nothing has been decided. We're gonna do a lot more discussion and presentation in our upcoming meetings on this from our school start times committee. But we were able to, because one of the silver linings, I guess, of this COVID, we were able to do something, a sort of a pilot, to see how it worked, and we got a lot of information from that. And one of the biggest outcomes that we're hoping is to have, you know, as late a start time as possible for the elementary schools, and also, if we can try to get those three schools on the same schedule, that's a real bonus for the district, and for families and for teachers. And so we're hopeful that we have a plan that could do that. We're still examining all the data, and that is really why the busing questions that are also on here are very important to have that information. So although it was sort of non-binding, getting that information, about 50% of the people who completed the survey gave us the busing information we need to make some of those decisions for next year, because the numbers help determine how many runs we need to make, and whether we can do that with the start times. But again, we don't want to build it just based on one year. We anticipate ridership may fluctuate a little bit next year, as, you know, we recognize that some people are working from home that may not be for the rest of their career. So we don't want to make a huge change that we think wouldn't be sustainable for multiple years, but we're fairly confident at this point that we have some creative solutions. So we'll have more to share on that later. So I'm sure there are a lot of questions about reopening, but again, just to reiterate, the Department of Ed has not given us the exact guidelines of which grades, which dates they're thinking, whether there are solutions. So one great solution to lunch is, don't have lunch. Just miss before lunch, and in the afternoon, have some remote connection or something like that. That's still sort of a hybrid. It's a little bit different look to what we have now. That works better for elementary, I think, not so great for middle high school, where you probably have similar classes in the afternoons, always in remote, right? Then you could talk about, well, do we start doing some kind of cascading where, you know, a different class each afternoon? And that gets complicated in its own way, right? But I don't, we still don't know whether the department's going to even allow something like that. So for us to develop a full plan and publish it and say, this is what's happening, I think is a little premature. So our plan here is to see what comes out tomorrow officially, see what comes out from the department. We've been told that most likely by next Wednesday, we will have that lunch guidance. So I think by the middle of next week, and into the end of next week, we're gonna have to make a decision. Either we're gonna develop our plan based on the DESI guidance, or we're gonna say, the DESI guidance hasn't come, we need to develop our own plan, in which case we will. But either way, we're looking at bringing back elementary students, certainly early in April, first week, second week of April, middle school, high school, whether it's around that timeframe, or maybe a little later, maybe after the break. That would be my recommendation at this time. Thank you very much. Light that in the middle. I'd love to hear from the different committee members, what their thoughts are. Chris, since you're not here, I might call on you first, so we do have a discussion, but do you have any thoughts on, any questions for Dr. Daly, or any thoughts?
A couple comments. I'll, I'd like to echo what Dr. Daly said, it's in that the primary goal really has to be getting as many kids back in for in-person learning as we can while still making sure that things are safe. I hope that's a fair paraphrase, Dr. Daly, but that seems, you know, that's the goal of our mission of educating. I'm glad to see any progress going in that direction. You know, the concern I have is really just that, right now, it seems like there's a push and a pull, where the state is pushing us to get back in person, and has stated that under six feet is okay, but as I understand it, the CDC is still advocating for six feet. So I can understand any parents that feel confusion about that. I feel a lot of confusion about it myself, and I'm not sure how to resolve that. But nevertheless, provided that things are safe, getting kids back into school is the best thing for families and the best thing for kids, of course.
So the CDC did say... So the CDC did say up to six feet. They did change that a little bit. And they said especially if the district is in the red. Now, their definition of red is a little bit different than ours. It's based, I believe, more county data. Again, it's the national assessment. But that's another reason why out of the gun, we're not going to jump ahead into this. We, we are just coming out of the red of the town. And so that's, that's another adjustment. But CDC has not completely agreed with what's coming out locally. But part of what's going to be presented by the Board of Education, to the Commissioner tomorrow, I believe, is going to be a letter from many, many physicians and and medical experts in Massachusetts that helps to to try to close some of that gap. Because locally, that's something we've also wanted to address as well, or some of the discrepancies between DESI, DPH, and CDC at the national level. And so I know that that's something that they're addressing head on tomorrow at the Board of Education meeting at the state.
Other committee members.
Rich?
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in. A couple of quick clarifying questions. Daley, first, at the very beginning of your discussion, you mentioned that a number of 65, somewhere between 65 and 70%, and I wasn't clear what that was referring to. You said something with 70% would or wouldn't.
It was, it was the original survey, I think, about hybrid versus whatever.
Thank you. That was the, yeah, I didn't put that graphic up. That was the, when I first did a survey a few weeks ago, I guess it was a few months ago, maybe, it was, the question was, would you be comfortable with your students coming back at less than six feet? It was really when we were getting a lot of emails on both sides, and I put it out there to see. And it was very much divided. It was mid-sixties to forties. So there was a lot of people that wanted to come back, and there's a lot of people that did want to come back.
And so, and so the, the news is that the, the current survey is showing a definite trend towards being willing to come back.
Definitely, definitely in that direction. As I mentioned, there was no option on that survey to status quo. And I have received a few emails saying, things are working well, why would you change it right now? And and really, what this Board of Education piece is, it, it really takes it out of, in some ways, takes it out of the control. If time on learning, if it is determined that hybrid is no longer counts, we can't do it. So it's, it's, it's got nothing to do with, really, that piece of it is not even on table because we can't offer that program anymore. There will be labors available, but we, we wouldn't qualify for that because of our, you know, our status, our counts, our building, our secure, all those.
And I think that's an important point. That, you know, we're going to follow the requirements of the department. You know, there, there may be some other things that are recommendations, or we're going to try to get you to a certain place, but the requirements are going to follow for sure. In the pool testing, you have a set of participatory participation rates or, you know, what kind of, you know, how, how many people are participating above the staff and the student?
I can get the exact numbers for you. It's, I'd say percentage wise, it's a higher number of staff. It's, it's, it's very high. We did have, forgive me if I mentioned this already, but we did have some confusion. So I want to make sure it's clear. You, you need to register for symptomatic testing, and then you have to register again for pool testing. So what I did last Friday, I emailed everyone who was officially approved for for pool testing, and then emailed the entire district the next morning, and said, if you didn't get my email last night, you're not in. So I think that shook the bushes a little bit, and you got another 200 or 300. So there's, I believe, total staff and students, close to 650 to 700 out of about 3,000 or so, if you count all staff and all students. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not everyone. And and I think for some, it's, it's a question of, they're focused on the vaccine now, less than on the testing. I think for some, it's, they don't want to take the time or subject, you know, themselves to the, to the testing. But it's worked very, very smoothly. So you may see, as more folks do it, word about getting more folks involved. And so each week, we will extend it. There will, most likely, I believe, the original date was March 9th, that you had to sign up. I'm trying to remember that date. I, I don't know whether that's been changed now. You know, in my mind, it's changed. I don't know if there's a new date established. But I think, I do think at some point, we will say, no more registrations after this point. I think that some of the data they want is to see multiple weeks, and they don't want people just doing it for one or two weeks. But we will accept new folks, new entries, and I'll probably send out a reminder of that, and also a reminder on the survey to get some more information.
So there's really a lot of reason to hope that as we get into April, that the, between the testing and the vaccinations that are going, and it's unclear, it's completely unclear how quickly educators will be able to be vaccinated at this point. But it's going to be a least of all.
Correct.
And, and you understand that the return to school, it's, return to full time is not contingent on vaccinations, at least the state doesn't claim that, and neither does the CDC. But it feels like, as we get to April, we're going to be barring a complete turnaround in a much better place. A lot more information, the case count should be way down, and hopefully people will feel more comfortable about returning to full. So I think we're on the right path.
I, I would just say that, you know, from what I heard from the governor the other day, they're going to, as many of these vaccines come available, they're going to try to get them into the hands of those that are on the list, and teachers are now on that list to make appointments. It sounds like at the end of the month, they're going to get a lot more. And at that point, it may also be one dose. And I, I'm getting a very good feeling, good sense, that we could have every teacher that wants to be vaccinated by April vacation, let's say, certainly by that point. And so hopefully, by that point, those that need their second dose will get it, and a lot are going to, I think, take advantage. I'm hearing more people say, I'm going to just wait for the one dose and get it one and done, and I'm done. So we'll see. But that's, that's optimistic. Again, I, I would have loved to have it done very differently and have a very different plan, and we've advocated for that. I, I think I failed to mention that, you know, the town, as well as Mr. Brady, the Department of Health, we've been trying to get either clinics in town through local pharmacies. We're still trying every day. I was reaching out to some different contacts today to just see if there's anything possible. And if we can't figure out any way to do this locally, we will. But they have just really not supported a supply of vaccines to the local, and it's really been pushed to the pharmacies, CDF, and to these larger distribution areas. So that's, those are the options we have now. The governor mentioned there is infrastructure, if we get more doses, to do it in different ways. And we certainly will explore whatever option it is. It, it may be challenging. You know, I've, I've mentioned it before, that, you know, folks now are going to take whatever appointments they can get. We've discouraged them, obviously, staff from, from missing the day, but I can understand why. If you're nervous about this, you're going to take what you can get. And I think as a community, a school community, we're all going to pitch in and just realize that there might be days where there's a bunch of people that are, that are out getting a shot, and we're going to cover for each other. And I, I think we will certainly get through it. But it, it's going to be a, an interesting pinch over the next few weeks. But I think we'll be, you know, I think this extension of the window made me feel better, that all will be spread out more as well.
Thanks.
Yep.
Diana?
I just wanted to, I know you alluded to almost wanting to get some feedback regarding middle school and high school. What's going to come up? Like we say, elementary school possibly have some flexibility. I just wanted to give feedback that I think that's great that you're thinking about that. And I hope that the district will go in, because I, I think there's value in that. I mean, as you guys all know, I was always an advocate of, of three feet and hoping for as much in-person as possible. So I'm, I'm certainly an advocate of the plan that you, at least at this point, think you're going to be exploring. And then I was just out of curiosity, had a question. And I, you know, I haven't really, I don't know what other, you know, organizations and industries are doing just yet and how this will, will all play out. But I don't know if you've thought about it yet, but is it going to be required that teachers get vaccinated? Or is it going to be optional?
Yeah. At, at this time, we, you know, there's a lot of those questions out there.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not aware that it's going to be a requirement to be vaccinated. Even, I don't, I'm not even sure if it's a requirement for them to tell us that they've been vaccinated.
Yeah.
But we are going to strongly suggest both.
Okay.
If, if you are vaccinated fully, you no longer are a part of the contact tracing process. You no longer need to quarantine. It's, there are many changes because of that. And so we do want that information. But there are some legal questions about whether it can be fully required. But it certainly is strongly recommended. And the sense that I have is that
Everyone probably will.
Everyone, everyone's on board. But there will be, for many different reasons, people that may not be able to, or different allergies or whatnot. And so it, you know, to my knowledge, it's not a requirement at this time. But it's a great question that comes up.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need any thoughts? Okay. And then I'll, if anybody on the call has any comments, if you want to raise your hand, we'll call on you as well if you have questions. I'll just start by saying about pool testing. I appreciate how, how smooth it's gone. It was, it was confusing registering, I will point out, because it took me a little bit of time to do that. But just for people that don't remember, the, the benefits of it, I think, are really important because somebody might have COVID and not know about it yet. And so the earlier we can do it, there's fewer contacts. It's just a much more rapid response if there is somebody that's infected, which I think helps to contain it. And so I know my kids all signed up for it. They all did it. Very easy. It's not the really long stick. It's just a little Q-tip one. So it was actually very easy. So I think if anybody is listening and hasn't signed up, I really do think there's a lot of value in it. I think I want to start by pointing out that I think our hybrid approach has been working pretty well. You know, I mean, and, and I think it's worth pointing that out. And I really appreciate all the teachers. Like, we've all heard the horror stories from other districts. Our teachers have gone, gone out of their way to try to make this work. And so any of my comments is not saying that what's, what's happening now is not working well. It is. As Rich kind of mentioned, you know, DEFC is, is mandating things. You see some school committees that are sort of getting on board to try to fight the DEFC, and DEFC, and they're trying to organize, you know, ways to fight that. I don't support that. I mean, I think that if that's what the rule is, that's what the rule is. We have to abide by that. And as Diana said, I mean, I was in favor of, of as much in-person learning as we could in the beginning as well. I understand there's a trade-off if some students would be less than six feet apart at some time. I don't think that necessarily means three feet. It might be five feet for some kids, maybe four and a half for some kids. They might be in certain classes. But I do think it's time to try to get back as much as we can. But I also see a big difference between elementary and high school, middle school. Because elementary, I think, is going to be the one that's mandated. High school, middle school, I think, is the model. And, and, and I've been as reactive as anybody. I've, I've annoyed Dr. Daley this week quite a bit. But I, I understand from the models that with high school, middle school, I think it's a lot easier for a kid to still be in hybrid and the class not really be that much different. Whereas in elementary, I think it's, it's very different. And so even if we decided to, you know, let the high school, middle school go slower, maybe you still have a hybrid approach. And that keeps the numbers down a little bit because you heard Shivi say earlier, there might be some students that would rather be in hybrid still. To me, the point is trying to get the option to allow students back when they want to be back, if they want to be back. And so I think we should be moving forward towards that. But Dr. Daley pointed out, we need to know the guidelines of the plan. We need to work with the unions. We need to figure out the logistics of it. Because, you know, being able to be back in the class and being able to be back and eat lunch are two different things. And so, you know, there's a lot to go. And I know everybody wants to push the gas and get an answer tomorrow. But I do know that from conversations with Dr. Daley, that there are plans being made, and there's a lot of conversations going on. So I think everybody's pushing in the same direction. But that's my thought. Dr. Daley?
A couple of things. So, you know, I do appreciate the, the choice in allowing students to come back. In some ways, just the logistics, we've even talked about, I mean, the physical movement. We are in the, in the school tonight, so you guys are seeing some of it. The number of desks that are in the cafeterias that have to physically go back in the classrooms and all of that, to phase some of that in is just cumbersome. And, and to, because depending on who chooses to come back, you might need 26 in one room and 15 in another. You know, it's logistically much easier to do a Band-Aid and say, we're back, desks are out of the cab, desks are back here. There's, you know, so there's a lot, even, quite honestly, like, we've talked about, are we, are we hiring outside help to help with this one big move and do it in one, one weekend or something? So there's a lot of things to consider. Something about middle high school that I didn't mention as well, you know, we talk about senior events and all those things, and just having some of those, all those things that we talk so much about, that were much more the front burner as you get into late April, May, June, with those upperclassmen, about having that time together as a class, to do some of those things and to have those opportunities, I support. When we talk about, certainly don't want this to be the driver, but we talk about MCAS testing, which is scheduled to happen, to be able to do MCAS testing with all the sophomores on one day as opposed to doing a cohort A MCAS testing, cohort B MCAS, I mean, you're, you're now creating half as many disruptions for testing as you would otherwise. So not that that's a driver, but it's certainly a logistical thing that we're thinking about with secondary. And then the, the last part is just, you know, I think we understand, you know, how important it is to have our, our secondary folks back as well as our elementary. We're going to work with our teachers to make sure that it's done in a careful and thoughtful way. But we certainly want to have, you know, I, I, I think that our model will work with bringing all those grades back. But we will listen to what comes out tomorrow, and we will think about, is there, you know, what's the best way to do it with us here in North Reading?
I just wanted to, Diana, I just wanted to add just one thing to consider as well, is that, like, the sixth grade transition here in North Reading is the most difficult transition that we have in our district. And I know just from personal experience that that grade is struggling. And so even to get them back for a few months, you know, that's why I'm an advocate for sure at the middle school. But I, I do agree with kind of all the things that are going to happen for seniors and in the high school. I just think there's a lot of supporting elements to, to consider there. I just wanted to kind of raise that point.
Dr. Daley?
In my mind, if we can do it this spring, to give the kids a head start in the fall, I think is just, if we can do that. And I think, you know, what, what I've heard from some, from teachers is, you know, we all know it's going to happen at some point. It's a matter of figuring out when and how to do it safely. So if we can do this safely, and you give folks a head start, and there's going to be all sorts of conversation, I mean, we, kids are coming three days a week, most of the students. So it's not that big a difference, but it will be different to now see all of your class at once. I mean, there are some differences there. And there are going to be some students who have some questions, some gaps, some troubles, some things that need to be addressed. And the sooner we can do all that, the better. And anything that's going to, anything that we do now is going to pay dividends in the fall when we come back, hopefully, in the fall as well.
I, I 100% agree with that. And to, to work it up that way, elementary school and then sixth grade, I just, you have to balance that a little bit with the, the lack of under, maybe it's better understood that, I just haven't read about it, but of, of the different risk levels between. And it's always frustrating when, I'd be interested to read this letter that you gave us, Dr. Daley, from the, from the physicians. If they, if they give us any information, you know, the, you know, the difference between elementary kids and high school kids, there's such a huge difference in age and, and potentially such a huge just difference in the risk of, of catching the disease, transmitting it. And so that's the only thing that you have, in my mind, that I worry about, balancing, getting the correct balance right. But I think moving sixth graders is a great point. It'd be great to get those kids back for a couple of months.
I'd say one, one obvious difference, and, and something maybe I didn't mention, just the, the numbers in the buildings, right? So it's not just having all the kids in, you're having 100% of the kids in the hallways, in, on the stairwells. And, and so are high school kids going to be more shoulder to shoulder just because they're a lot bigger? Yeah. It's harder to spread out. And so that's something we need to think about as we're legit, in addition to lunch. It's also, how do we, you know, maybe we're staggering some dismissals and entrance times and, and passing times, so that there's just, we don't want to go from what's working. And that's, that's what, quite honestly, with the data, we have seen low transmission, but we've seen low transmission with six feet of distance and a lot of physical space at all times. So I think what we need to just be careful of, and I, I appreciate these doctors that have said, we see low transmission, and we've always said you could do three feet. And there's some schools that have done three feet, but to my knowledge, there's not a lot that have been operating at that level all year. I think many districts that are, that are operating are at closer to six. And I've seen those surveys as well. So it's worked well with those precautions in place. I think, I think things have changed, though, and I think that's the biggest piece. I think, I think the rates are down, the transmissions are down, the more that we're able to go outside for classes again. I think with all that on the horizon, you know, part of the lunch solution can be some outside time. It could be, you know, certainly a solution with our music classes, our phys ed classes. I mean, they've been going outside for walks even in this climate. But I think once it's warm, we're back on the track, we're back in the field.
It never gets warmer.
All those things will open up. And I think, you know, we're certainly feeling the light at the end of the tunnel a little bit. I'm very optimistic and excited about that.
Yeah. And it's clear the community, just, just the overall community transmission rates have a big impact on the school. So if they're down, that makes a big difference.
Yeah. And the only other thing I would say is that Yeah, I mean, and the only other thing I would say is that I think, I think what's coming out right now is there's a lot of political, a lot of it's becoming political. It's becoming, we're being ordered to do it by the commissioner or this or that. But our objective in this room and in this district is to focus on the kids and what's in the best interest of the students. And I think we've all said the entire time that in-person learning is the preferred way of learning. And so we would rather have in-person if we can. That's what we're trying to get back to. We do have a hand up, so Alexis, if you want to unmute. Alexis, are you here? Hands down now.
Lower the hand.
Lower the hand.
Please use the chat.
Yeah, you can also chat if you have a question, you want to type in something.
I would just say, my suggestion too, we would give at least a week's notice if there was a change in the schedule. You know, it would be, you know, preferably more, but we may, we may phase in, we may try one grade and then some others until we give folks notice. But again, we would not see it being all that disruptive because it's going from three days to five. You know, it's not, it's not like we're going from remote to full in-person, right? So that's a very, a change. They are asking there, Rich, and I.
Yeah, okay. Alexis, can you unmute?
Yep, can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Great, so this is her husband, Ernesto, how are you? So, good, I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Sure.
So the first one, I guess, just academically, from a student body perspective. You know, if we think about 2019 and where we are today, I'm gonna not think about 2020 per se. But how are the kids in comparison, would, if we were to compare, let's say, a third grader of 2019 to a third grader today, would they be at the same level if we were comparing a month, like for the month of March, right? And my gut tells me they're probably not. And is there any thoughts or concerns or plans on how to potentially catch up, if you will?
Can I answer that? Yeah, so academically, I'll answer that first. You know, we're prepared for some learning gaps and some social emotional gaps. I will say that our hybrid model, Mr. Buck, we said, has been working as well as it could possibly be. And we have conducted standardized assessments, we've conducted, you know, check-ins with teachers. We are not seeing drastic, you know, we're not hearing from teachers that, you know, by this point in the year, by March, the third graders are usually at this point, and this year, they're behind. We're not hearing that at all from our teachers, you know, from our A and P teachers to our third graders to our first graders. I don't think anyone's saying it's exactly the same. I think there is a little bit of a gap, but there's nothing that's very, very concerning or alarming to our teachers. And so we frequently check in with our, with our staff about this. And we're not seeing those huge academic issues. We do think that whatever gaps are there will be made up and we certainly will be, you know, addressing that as needed in the spring and into next year. I think the social emotional piece, I think you're seeing more. I think you're seeing more of students that aren't connecting in the same way that I've seen with my own children at home. That they're not seeing their peers and their friends as much. You know, my, my children are hanging out with their younger siblings more than their, than their friends. And you're just seeing some differences. I think that will start to improve as they come back to school and hopefully as they get to perform, you know, concerts and sports and all that as well. But we are not, as a district, that concerned about the gaps. We certainly are aware of them, we're certainly going to work at them, but I'm not saying they don't exist, but they, we're not as, honestly, we're not as worried about that as we thought we may be because of this scenario.
And the one thing that I will add in before we go to the next question is, if you stay around, I'll try to keep you to stay in this meeting longer. But when you look at the budget we're facing, you know, we're trying to propose a budget later today, and you'll see a direct link between some of that. A lot of what we're trying to promote are to impact things like social emotional learning. There's, again, you know, increased reading specialist. There's a lot of things that we need in this district, and so the budget relates to that. And it all comes together. Like at the last meeting, we were going through school improvement plan and we were looking through that. And we saw that, you know, there are, you know, there was a gap in reading. And I know that from the budget, part of that is addressed in that. And so it all kind of comes together. Where when we do see something, we do try to specifically address that issue. And you'll see if you stay around for the budget, it's specifically called out, the position that we think we need in this district to address those issues.
Yeah, I'll just also say that, you know, one, for some students for whom this is not working, they're, have more, more needs than ever before. We're certainly prepared for that as well. I know that remote, hybrid, whatnot is not working very well for everyone. And for those students, there are certain needs. So I, I'm speaking, when I was speaking about the successes, that's really for the, for the total body. But those that are in need are in a lot of need. And very often, those students are maybe not the same students that have needs when we're in full person. Some students have adjusted differently to being in remote. And I just want to say that, you know, our teachers are really to thank for that. Our model allowed and our teachers embraced, for the most part, a lot of connections and live synchronous teaching and opening their classrooms up. And not everyone did that, not everyone did it all the time. But I think most have done that and I think as the year went on, more did they. And I think that, embracing that philosophy allowed us to teach very much what we always taught, just in a slightly different way. As opposed to, you know, having students do packets or things at home. And when I referred to that earlier about us not having to have, not having to adjust our time on learning, it's because of the way we approached hybrid. And that's not, that's really not the way it was everywhere. And it's in large part due to what our teachers were able to embrace.
Okay. Uh, yeah, my second question, it should be pretty straightforward. But as I kind of think about potentially the kids going back, you know, next month or two, if you will, and things somewhat feel normal and we go through the summer and we come back in the fall. It sounds like there's a lot of thought that's being put into academically what the fall is going to look like. But as I fast forward a little bit forward into the winter, you know, as we think about just a simple continuity plan, how are we thinking about preparing parents potentially if we had to go into some type of a hybrid mode if there was a spike? I think just, you know, I'm thinking from a communications perspective, is that something that parents need to think about? Where, you know, parents are starting to plan, right? As we think about the fall and everything else. How does, is, how is, you know, this, you know, the committee and everyone else thinking about that? Just not only internally, but from externally, a parent perspective as well? Is that something that's being thought about, spoken about? Does that make sense?
It does. I will say from where I stand and from the meetings I made with superintendents, with the commissioner, and if you want to say where I was last May versus now. Last May, we were talking about the upcoming school year and having to be prepared for everything. Those, we're not hearing that now. I think there's a high, you know, the vaccine is proving to be very effective, not only against the current strains, but also other strains. The real move now is to get everyone vaccinated. And I think there will be some concerns going into next year. But I'm, I'm not hearing at this point that we need to be planning and racing for the, for possibly having to go to remote at some point next year or to hybrid. That, that said, I think none of us ever saw this coming. And now that we've been through it, I think we have a blueprint. That if, if it stuck, if we start to get any indication that something else, whether it's COVID again or COVID, you know, whatever the next COVID 21 is, right? Hopefully, that does not happen for another hundred years. But if it does, I think we're well prepared to do that. And we would give as much notice as, as possible to do any kind of preparation.
All right, great. And the last one should be pretty easy. You know, as we're thinking about next month and we're going into, you know, spring break, is, I'm assuming, in, you know, you're thinking about continuing to have April vacation? Or is there any thoughts of potentially if the school were to open to kind of, you know, cancel April vacation, I guess? Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, at this time, we're not thinking about that. I know last year, we, we played with the calendar a lot more in the spring because there was a lot of uncertainty to kind of power through, to get our days in. We're in a much more clear place. This, this year, we followed our calendar, we followed our, you know, our, our breaks, and we followed our green gold schedule at the high school. I mean, our days and everything looked very much like a typical year. So I don't see that need. And the way we built our calendar this year with the breaks that we have taken is allowing us to be out by mid-June. So we're not up against the end of the year. And so I think that break in April is one that will give us some time to make some adjustments. And I don't see any adjustments to that this year.
The only thing I would add is I think, I think a lot of teachers need a break. You know, I mean, there's a lot going on. And if these changes are being made, I think when the plans are being made, the break will be incorporated into those plans. You know, whether it's just physically trying to move things but nobody's here, or, you know, you try something out. I don't know. I just think that we probably need that vacation, so I don't, I wouldn't support changing it either.
Okay. Well, I thank you all for your hard work and everything that you guys are doing for us, for our kids and, and parents, and continue on doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, and great questions. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're done with the first item on our agenda. No more questions or comments if we're going to move on? The next thing is the school calendar. Dr. Daly, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So at this time, we certainly, as you know, we had many drafts of our calendar last year, even before. We had to face all the vacations this year. What I'm hoping to do tonight is to just get comments and feedback on this draft. And then discuss and maybe be able to publicize and share out a potential start date. I think that's what people really are looking for, for next year, some start and end dates for the year. At this time, there is also no indication of any kind of a change to the number of required days for next year. If you recall, this year, we only had 170 days for students. All indications are that we are back with those same number of days for next year. So we had discussed last year about looking at when Labor Day fell and making some changes. It was clear that the committee supported students beginning prior, sorry, after Labor Day. There was some discussion about the possibility of teachers coming back early. So this, this calendar, another thing to just point out at the end of the year, there is a, there's a holiday that is due this year. This year, it falls on a, on a, on a Saturday, and so it's celebrated on a Saturday. Next year, the holiday falls on a Sunday, and that's June 19th. It's called Juneteenth is the holiday. And so now that will be celebrated on June 20th. So that then is a, is a day that we take as a holiday. We would not be open. And that would push our end date to the 27th with five snow days. And so one of our considerations, in addition to just, I think, the overall value of having some time with teachers before the students come back to address the learning gaps, the social emotional needs of students that are going to be coming back to school in the fall, to possibly have the teacher professional development day on the 2nd. So they, the suggestion here would be that our teachers would come back for professional development before the school begins. The 7th would be our welcome back day with all of our staff. Students' first day would be on the 8th. We would be returning to several professional development days. One thing that we're trying to do is streamline a little bit. We had through this year, we've changed our elementary conferences from three afternoons or three days to. This calendar would continue that. We would still have the three release days, but one of them now would be professional development. So for the number of afternoons when students are not in school, that would be released, that would be decreased by two. So we'd still have the same PD days, but we'd have two less conference days. And so this, this calendar proposes that as well. We would have a second full professional development day on election day. And the reason why we continue on election day is that is a day that many districts have to take because there are schools used for voting. And that allows us to do multi-district professional development. So we would want to preserve that date as well. So with those two days in the calendar and with the new holiday, it does bring our last day with five snow days to the 27th. And it preserves the vacation days and some other days as well, the Christmas, winter break, Christmas on the 25th, obviously, Christmas Eve on the 24th. But the 23rd of December, this calendar does list it as a professional development half day, but that, that is actually not being recommended. So I guess this draft is a little bit off on that, I'm sorry. We need that changed.
So the 23rd is a full day?
23rd right now would be a full day and the half day should be the first. So I, I think, I think that might be a little bit different. And this, this one that gets scanned in the packet is the first half, and unfortunately, you should have had a different one. It's just that slight change. But the overall, I just wanted to have a discussion tonight and then maybe if we can at least prove the first, prove the first day for students. We can then, you know, I still have comment out from the, you know, we consult with our, our teachers union and others for some feedback. So we're at an early stage. And we're a little bit later with this than we have been in the past. Part of that is because I wanted to see where we were and what it would look like. But I thought the feedback on the first day would be appropriate.
I have two questions. Nobody, I mean, I'll start with questions first. So my only two questions are, number one, would there be any thought to having both professional development days on the first day and the second of September? And then the first day for the students being on the 7th of September? Or is that not something that's of interest?
So as I mentioned, the reason, I mean, I would welcome that. The, the bigger reason is really that, that election day allows us for a lot of professional development and it's something that we.
Yeah, I mean, the start date, September 1st to September 2nd.
So.
So having a PD day on the 1st and then the, the, the greeting day that's usually on the 7th on the 2nd.
I see, so keeping the PD today. The, the discussion that we had last year that I recall was that people that are traveling on Labor Day weekend are planning not on Monday and then being in school the next day, if I recall. So that, we could certainly present that. It does, contractually does present some challenges because there are certain contracts that if you start before Labor Day, there is compensation that for Labor Day. And so that did happen this year and we had to either pay those, that day's work or come up with a comp day. So we could do that again and come up with an arrangement. But I think the larger reason why we didn't put that in there was what I, I thought I heard last year was that the committee felt that if you're on Labor Day weekend on Monday, the idea is that that's the day and you're not going to school the next morning. And because that's what we've always done when we started after Labor Day, was you start on a Wednesday with students and the Tuesday was snow. But I'm, I'm willing to consider that if the committee feels otherwise.
I mean, I don't have a strong purpose either way. I mean, I don't, we start on the 6th, if the students start on the Tuesday or the Wednesday, I don't, I'm just looking at, I don't think there will be, hopefully, there won't be five snow days. But, you know, June 27th is a very late ending day.
Yep.
And so that would just move it up to June 24th being the last day.
I'd love to get into that, yes.
And so I'm just wondering if, if that was the worst case scenario, that, you know, you're getting out summer between the 20th and the 24th, I think would be nicer. And so the only way that I was thinking about doing that is if the first could count as one of the professional development days, students wouldn't be back till that Tuesday.
Yep.
But that was just my one thought. And then the only other question was, for snow days, I assume right now the guidance is it's going to be traditional snow days next year? That hybrid days won't work or do you know that yet or not?
Everything we've been told is that that was a one-year law. I don't know what will be preserved from that moving forward. So that's, that's certainly one of those things that we can discuss. First of all, what's allowed and then what we do locally. But again, similar to the, the other scenario, the infrastructure is in place. We have Chromebooks. Every teacher has a master's degree now in digital learning and teaching and, and we could do that easily. And I, I think those days have been effective on, you know, I think having a traditional snow day has its place. But I think there's other days when we absolutely could be safer and be home and then not be here until late June. I know we're going to be happy about the decisions, I hope. I know we're gonna be happy about the decisions, I hope, at the end of this year. Hopefully, we're out of the woods with the snow, we'll see. But at this point, you know, we're gonna be able to get out, you know, a day earlier because there are most snow days. Diana, question?
I was just gonna make a comment first to say that I think the calendar looks good. You know, I'm always an advocate of starting after Labor Day, and this depicts that, and I think I'm talking about this too, but I think it looks good as is. I was gonna, this is just on my mind because my son is so good at saying, "Mom, there's no half-days in March this year." So I noticed there was one in this calendar. Did things shift around in terms of timing of Professional Development? Because I, I'm pretty sure it's like this year, there's nothing in the March timeframe, and I'm just curious if there was any reason for that. And I'm sure it's nothing of significance.
If it's Friday.
And then my only other, you know, this is probably leading into our school start times, but I did see some magical start times start listed down there at the bottom. So that were looking pretty good. So I was just curious if that was some of the thinking, or if they were just placeholders for the time being.
So, so good questions there. A good Friday, the 15th, I believe, next year. We, we, we looked at that calendar this year with March. And quite honestly, I think a lot of us thought we might be in full remote at this point, and we would revisit that calendar. Otherwise, we said, wow, this is a very, we actually talked about, we have a PD day at the end of the year this year, and we had discussions, do I come forward here and move that to March and then we get out a day later? We ultimately decided we're just gonna power through with March. That was the calendar. There were some PD days in the calendar, half-days, that we moved. There was one in September. We did some shifts this year. But we ultimately just said, let's just keep, keep moving through, and we'll get out a little bit earlier with the students in June. So we, we return, I think, when it's all said and done this year, you know, we got creative. We have the SAT day, and those, so we had some of those things to build this year. But I think ultimately, we probably had less Professional Development Days this year than we typically do. And so we've resumed that for next year. Again, the December 23rd one is inaccurate here, so I don't know if there's another one missing. But the next draft will have it all very clear. But we typically, in the last several years, have had five half-days and two full-days, and that's what we would be returning.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then, was there another question?
Just the start days, I know you'll get to that.
So, yeah, so I, you know, my thinking there was, I wanted to get.
Do you want to state what they are for people, too?
Sure. And I'm sorry, I thought this was, I couldn't share. The, what's on this draft right now is just showing that the high school would begin at 8:30, which is, according to the science, and that's what we're doing this year, according to the sciences out there, that high schools are recommended not to start any earlier than 8:30. So would be about an hour delaying on what most schools and what our school's traditionally done.
And the days are a little bit longer because this year, the days were shortened slightly as well.
Sure. So the calendar's gonna, the times are gonna look different. The time on learning requirement of 170 days was shortened, as was the hours required. So that was a little bit different this year. So this is in here as a placeholder. So we took what we did this year, didn't change it completely back to the way it used to be, and we built in the longer days just to show what it could look like. And then if ultimately, we decide that we're not gonna continue with the start times, we will change that. But this is not official, and that's why I don't want the whole thing approved tonight because there's other PDs. Middle school would be 9 o'clock to 3:26, similar to what we're doing this year, obviously, just a little bit later because the full hours are restored. Under this model, we are hoping to start the three schools at 8 o'clock. As I mentioned before, those Professional Development half-days, when I try to bring the batch, put in little, all the third-grade teachers together to discuss across the district, we have multiple different dismissal times. So instead of getting a solid two-hour block, you're getting less than that because of all the travel and the different times. That's just one benefit to getting everyone on the same schedule. The other, every two years right now, you switch whether the early or the late school, and everyone's schedules are kind of changed. This is something that could, could certainly be affected that way. We were hoping, throughout us, is Michael and Sean Colleen and I, but especially Michael, has really spent a tremendous amount of time on this, looking at the bus, at the bus contracts, bus numbers, to determine that this could work. So we're not 100% there yet, but we, we're confident enough to put it there and to put it out as a possibility. You then would have some adjustments to the pre-K times, the full-day kindergarten and the kindergarten times to follow, to follow that schedule. Obviously, the dismissal times would be a little bit different. But I've, Mr. McGowan has checked the Almanac course as well. He wants to, you know, part of what we want to make sure with the earlier start time is that students aren't out waiting for a bus before it's, it's late. You know, we really want to be mindful of that. And I'm thrilled to see 8 o'clock. I mean, this year, when we did the batch, when we got it to 7:45 as opposed to 7:30, you know, which was the old high school start time, I was much happier. The fact that we're getting that much closer to 8 is fantastic. You know, might it end up being, you know, 7:55 to, you know, we might be playing a few minutes here or there. We're gonna try not to, but we do have to time those bus runs to make sure that they work. So, but right now, we went with sort of the clean round numbers, and I'd love some feedback on that.
In terms of the, sorry, just a minute, I have to follow up on this one. In terms of the bus cost, I believe the bus is all based on how many buses you have.
Yeah.
Even if you only do three runs instead of four runs, it doesn't change the cost at all, does it?
It doesn't. We've talked, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right. It doesn't.
Yeah. We, what we're discussing is what that looks like, if you take multiple runs or if you have more students on the bus. And we've got some preliminary feedback from our start times committee about that, some elementary parents who've shared, and then we would share that more with the community. But we're, I think at this moment, we're leaning towards maybe having some more runs.
Yeah. But that leaves us as a cost now. We can do more runs than the cost of it anymore.
Right. If you need to have less students on the bus, and the students on the bus for a shorter time, what we would then need to do is anticipate a cost of those students who aren't on the bus. What are they doing, right? They might have some activities at the school that's monitored by someone earning a stipend, so there's a cost to it. But I think right now that that might be what we're thinking, but there's also the possibility of maybe we structure the runs differently with more students on them, and they take a longer run. But either way, our goal is to get them back to the next school on time, so we're trying to sort that out. So we, we're gonna do everything we can to make that happen.
The right ship driving a lot of that. And that's why I was part of the survey, even before we did the survey we were looking at, and that was from 2019 to 2020 this year. It was gonna be maybe an average of two. But the survey was helpful, and when it started to come in, that's been a very good response very quickly. So that, that's been helpful. But certainly, you know, I think it's certainly feasible, there's a job, there's challenges to it, but I think it's feasible. We do, based on the contract, have access to the 10 buses right now for the day. So whether we do, you know, three runs, you know, four runs, the two TS, three TS, you know, multi-runs or shuttles, we have the access to the 10 buses, so.
And we're looking at all of them.
Sure. We're just trying to make it work.
And in terms of, we said you want feedback. I love it. I love that all three can be at the same time. I like the way the times are right now. I think that, you know, middle school being the latest probably makes the most sense. Although, my only question would be on like JV. Because if you have JV sports, don't they usually go before the varsity sports? And so they would be, my only worry about that would be if JV's the first game and they're the last one to dismiss, if the schedule could work out, but.
And middle s-
Yeah.
JV would be high school.
Yeah.
Oh, that, oh, JV's still high school.
JV's still high school.
Still not eighth grade, okay.
I will, I mean, I guess we should just talk about start times as we're, we have discussed both sides at the same time. The, Shavani's points are good. I think those are some good points. One thing I will point out about the sports is that a lot of school, new reports making this change has more schools making the change. Some of the coaches have said, you know, some coaches have said they have concerns. Other coaches have said, we're sometimes waiting at the field for another school to get there anyway because they're on a later start time. We are gonna see this continue. One of the biggest concerns, I mean, there's always gonna be people that are inconvenienced on either end, that it doesn't work for their schedule. That's always going to happen. But I think the biggest concern is, will this work? What are the implications? How's it gonna work? I think by, by doing it this year, through everything else being up, you know, in enough people, and by piloting it, you never have an opportunity to pilot something like this in a traditional year, right? So we're able to do that. I think people have seen that it's working. We've seen some of the benefits. And I think the biggest question usually is with elementary folks, how's it gonna work? And I think some of the feedback I've received in the, in the open comments on this have been that the elementary students have done well, but please try to keep it as close to eight as, but that's what's been said. We don't want them super early, but a lot of the kids are off and they're ready to go to school. You know, and that might affect some people that need it. We've certainly seen an impact of before-school programs. We may need more after-school programs. Or, you know, so we may see some shifts there, but there's, there's still some of those needs, though.
Chris, do you have a?
Uh, no, not about this. I mean, other than, other than, you know, obviously, I've been supporting this idea a super long time, and there are no silver linings really for last year, but this, here at least, we can take something from that and make, and make some good out of it.
You know, before we do a vote, the only other thing I was just gonna add in here, and this is a weird thing, but I was gonna start earlier with this. Company will reach out about not knowing when school committee meetings are. I just thought it would be worthwhile just to say when the next meeting is while people are still on it. And so the next school committee meeting is on March 22nd at 6:30 PM. And the main, main attraction then will be the middle school presentation.
And on the main district website, there's a calendar. Everyone can download it. The meetings are there. The links to the meetings are there. Under the School Committee tab is a document that lists all the meeting dates with hyperlinks to the meeting and recordings of the meeting. So I did send that out as a, as a video, and I'll do that again as well to make sure people see it because it's, it's in several places, as well as on the town side, where they post it.
I think we've just been going back and forth between Mondays and Thursdays. For a lot of time, they slash, and so.
They do in advance, but I, when we approve, at the end of our meeting tonight, we will approve like the next three. So I've always approved three out, so three weeks, more than three weeks, three meetings in advance is definite on the day.
Okay. So there's no more comments on the school calendar. Do you want, so do we want a motion to approve the 2nd as it? Or do you want to think about the 1st as well to move it up that? I'm just worried about the 27th being the last potential day of June. I don't, I don't care either way. I mean.
So I'm, I'm just gonna, I had to say, when you talked about, what we talked about last year.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the bigger concern was when we talked about possibly moving before Labor Day. And I think, I think we're all in agreement that that's kind of a non-starter.
Yeah.
For students, for students.
For students, coming back before Labor. I think the Tuesday after Labor Day is a little bit more negotiable if we feel like it's really important to get that extra day. That's my feeling. I mean, I'm not managing that schedule anymore, so I don't know how you guys feel. But how you feel like, we didn't feel, it feels like it's more negotiable.
To me, I think it's about the educators, what they want, if they want the one or two days, if they want the orientation after Labor Day, so they have an extra day before they come back, or if they'd rather do the two days and be able to be out a day earlier. I, I would leave it up to them, but.
What I've heard anecdotally is, is the preference is, there, I believe that the teachers union or larger union would be comfortable coming back prior to Labor Day. Again, contractually, they're not coming back before the 1st of September. But if the schedule looks like this, they'd be open to that in order to get out earlier in June. That is what they say. I think it was said, and it may have been, you know, not the committee, but I remember someone saying last year, if you, if it's Monday and you're up in New Hampshire and you're doing a barbecue, the thinking of starting after Labor Day is you're not getting up, driving home, getting up the next morning. So I just wanna, I'd rather just discuss that now than to change it. So, but if the idea then is, you are getting in the car, driving home for school on Tuesday, that's, that's different. So what, what does starting after Labor Day mean to you? I guess that's sort of the discussion.
I, Rich is correct. Like, I've always been, the strongest point was to start the kids after Labor Day. That's always what I have a strong suit on. But, you know, and I certainly can waver either way, but I do think that Labor Day is a holiday of traditions, and I feel like a lot of people do go to somewhere in New England or something similar. And I think it would be fine to come back on Tuesday and have some plan for that. I don't think that's the end of the world. But I think, you know, there are gonna be some families that wish they didn't have to rush home and kind of leave their Labor Day in the middle of it. So, and then the other thing that I keep in the back of my mind is, yes, I know it's not set in stone, but there is still that possibility that we can have some remote snow days. So is that mitigating the impact at the end of the year of those five snow days? I mean, think about this year, we're, what, we had one snow day. So I kind of think about it from that perspective and think, maybe there might be some flexibility there, too, to allow for that. But I am not 100% adverse to moving it to Tuesday. I'm, the more important piece to me was starting after Labor Day.
Did I address all the concerns? Sorry. Did I address all the concerns financially about doing it before? Or do you think that, because we could, we could possibly do some kind of compensation, right?
Yeah.
I think, I agree with you there. It's not, it's not a huge concern.
No.
We see you, Chris. Well, actually, Janine sees you, but she yelled at me. So, Chris?
I'd just like to agree with, with Rich and Diana, particularly with what Diana just said. I, I think that it's a nice tradition to be one of those sans the start after Labor Day. I think people count on it. But I agree that when it seems appropriate, starting the day right after Labor Day could be, could be the right thing to do, depending.
And I guess the other question is, would you make it changeable depending? I mean, this is the second worst calendar, right? Last year was the worst calendar, coming, coming at the very latest possible day. And so that's the, that's the year that you might want to do it. This is the year you might want to do it, maybe next year and the year after. It doesn't matter until it switches back. So I guess that's the other point. Do you want to move it back and forth? Do you want to set it and forget it?
Yeah, I think it is. I, I, I would say we could have that flexibility, that when, when Labor Day is earlier, maybe we do start on the Wednesday. You know, but for this year, where we're trying to get out. Yeah, and I would say give people as much advance. If we're saying the 7th is the first day for students, then we let people know, start to know now and there. You know, they plan, maybe they plan some Monday, maybe some Sunday, and they know that now. So that's kind of why I want to get it out there soon.
So once again, the educators would be okay with it? Or you would have to just?
I would, again, I haven't shared that with them, so I would want to share. So maybe we.
Can you hold on it?
I'm fine holding it to the 22nd. I think, I think everyone's, I mean, you still can't go on this thing right now, so. I think people's plan, I think people are willing to be a little more flexible. So that is why, you know, I don't want to get all this approved, and then who knows where we are. So I'm more than fine just having a discussion tonight and bringing it back on the 22nd.
We're gonna have to approve other things anyways because it's not quite correct. So I think we just do it all.
It certainly would just be the start date is what I'd be looking at for the time. But I'm fine.
At least, at least families can know it's probably gonna be the 7th or the 8th.
Yep.
It's fine.
It's after, it's after, it's after Labor Day for students.
It's after Labor Day for students.
And it'll be, and for the educators, that, again, we're open to whatever they prefer. Do they want to get out a little bit earlier? And again, I agree, it's probably not gonna be the 27th anyways. But I feel like once you get to mid-June, you just want to be done, so.
Can't wait for the 8th when the parents vacation.
And then the 15 or 20 people who are still on the, on the meeting, I don't see a big backlash or something. That's gotta be worth some information.
I'm just looking at Mrs. Kapp, so she's not, she's not giving me a thumbs down yet, so.
We'll just, we'll, we'll just have a discussion tonight, and then we'll bring it back on the 22nd. Sounds great.
Perfect. Okay. So no, no motion on this one. Cool start times we've gotta get into already, but.
Yeah, I'll just give a very quick overview. You know, there's, there's some items here, here. Then we have, you know, again, a great group of folks that have been meeting proactively on this for several years. Mr. Colleen is the Assistant Superintendent Teacher Learning is sort of leading this group, and I've been a part of it. Mr. Conley's been a part of it. Mr. McGowan and several parents, and Paul Pierce, who's a teacher as well as a parent, has been a part of it. So the timeline that we're operating under, as you can see, So the timeline that we're operating under, as, as you can see, we are looking to have, um, an initial school calendar discussion tonight. We're hoping to have more detail around the busing. You know, we are, as we've discussed, this is a good year for this because the bus contract is up. The contracts, you know, teacher's contract is in negotiation. So there's, there is obviously impact to start times that we would need to discuss with all of our, our groups to make sure that the impact is understood and, and then to discuss what the, the implications would be. But I have had some preliminary discussions. The preliminary feedback has been, um, that, that there was support of, of the start time change. So I, I have not surveyed staff with some of those same questions that went up to the community. Uh, I, I will be doing that, as I mentioned, with students and also with staff. Uh, but we would wanna start some of those impact discussions soon. We are trying to schedule some type of parent community presentation about the benefits. I think folks are certainly more aware of it than, than, than in the past, but, um, Judith Owens is an example of someone who's, uh, an expert in this area that we're trying to coordinate with, with a parent night. If, uh, we're not able to get something scheduled live, we may host something ourselves and show and share. There's just so much out there from other communities, um, and, and just, you know, a few minutes of watching those videos and understanding the benefits, will really go a long way for anyone that, that has questions, um, about that. But we've been proactive in sharing that out over the last couple of years. So I think that the community is educated about it, but I think there's still some additional steps to take. We would like on around, this is one of those split dates, whether it's the 12th or the 15th that we're gonna figure out for our next meeting. But at that meeting, um, the committee would like to present to the, to the school committee, the start times group, with some of its findings and suggestions for next year. And around that same night, then we would have a final vote of the calendar with the, the times fully adopted. That's, does that seem like a reasonable timeline?
Yeah.
So we could still establish the start date next week, but then obviously the little right-hand corners that I appointed would need to be solidified through this process.
My, my only two quick comments on this one. Number one, for the people coming to present, I think you already have a yet, so don't oversell. Is your heavy yet? And then I think most people that are, are here are supportive of it. And then the other question is just about attendance. Have you seen any changes with attendance? I mean, do you see more high school kids that are on time now because it's later? Do you see any issue at the elementary with kids being late, or have you seen any shifts in that? Because I, I mean, I, I just know from talking to Mrs. Inbriano that her kids are always late.
No, that was me when I was young. I was always late.
I'm just wondering if you, if, if there's been any, any attendance change. And then again, I know COVID years is a little bit odd, but.
A little, yeah. It's a, it's a great question. I, I think we don't have, um, anything more than sort of anecdotal, but you know, Dr. O'Connell, especially at the middle school, has just expressed time and again to me the benefits that she's seeing. And teachers are saying to the principals and to myself directly, kids are more awake and alert in those first period classes. So we're hearing that over and over at the secondary level and we're not hearing at the other level. Other than I think the bachelor being the early, early school, we have heard some pushback, uh, from that just being certainly inconvenient. Maybe a little bit of a, of a challenge for some of the kids getting up and getting ready. But not, I've, I've honestly heard so much more positives about this from the students and from the staff. And I think what Shivani shared as well is, is, um, there are some concerns that students have, but there's certainly, uh, positives far away than negatives from what we've experienced. And that's really what you're hearing from other districts that have done this as well. So very, very similar. But I don't, but I don't have the actual attendance, uh, but that's something we can look into a little bit.
Good. Any other thoughts on start time? Okay, the time we've all been waiting for. District Connolly's most important meeting. So I'm gonna move this, cause you're a little quiet at times like, but I don't have that problem. So I'm just gonna move the mic a little bit closer to you.
Whenever it's a hard time here. Is everyone seeing mine? I'm sorry. All right, I'm behind you. Sorry about that. I unmuted myself when I shared. I accidentally. Okay, um, so we can't see your screen.
You want me to share my mic or?
That's all right. Let me try to do that again.
Okay, so, um, essentially we're gonna try to walk through the preliminary FY22 budget, um, as we typically do at this time of year. So at this point, the committee's kind of received their, their FY22 preliminary budget book. So this, really the purpose of tonight is kind of walk through the, the highlights and to go over the kind of the numbers, get into some discussion. But this is really the beginning of the FY22 budget development deliberation process. So we're gonna try to cover these main agenda items. We're gonna talk about some of the budget challenges that we are facing, um, this year. We're gonna talk about the main budget drivers, um, that are driving the FY22 budget. We're gonna go over the budget priorities by both the administration and school committee and, and get into the numbers at that point. Breakdown kind of where, where the funds are being allocated. We're gonna talk about some of the new initiatives, the staffing additions and driven by our strategic plan, as well as new initiatives in, in part related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll talk a little bit about our revenue offsets and our budget subsidies and talk about things that are outside of the, um, general fund request that the town supports, the appropriation, but certainly everything that sort of works in tangent to create the, the overall experience, um, for the North Reading students. And then just in conclusion, sort of what, what is sort of the budget represents and we'll, we'll have some closing comments. Um, so we get to the challenges. Uh, so certainly when you look at any kind of school municipal budget, there's always this sort of this tangent at that play where you're sort of beginning with a structural deficit right, right from the outset. And that's kind of the biggest, the biggest challenge when you look at the macro level of, of funding a, a school budget. Certainly items like we refer to as fixed costs, and that is health insurance, general liability insurance, retirement costs, other benefit costs like workers compensation, life insurance, Medicare. All those annual increases certainly tend to escalate at a far greater rate than the annual revenue that's coming in to, to fund the appropriation in the budget from year to year. So if you look at that first bar graph to the right, the top bar graph, you can see that over the last seven or eight years or so, this sort of certainly this dynamic that play, our fixed costs for all, the biggest amount of that is health insurance and other benefits and other areas that kind of come off the top before the revenue gets allocated between the school and the municipal budget. Those fixed cost increases are really growing at a far greater level than the revenue, which is made up of certainly, you know, state aid is a part of that, local property taxes, local receipts, like excise taxes, licenses, permits, certain fees. We all know property taxes are capped at two and a half percent. So there's certainly a limit to some of the revenue when we start this process. And that revenue grows at a lower percent. So you start, you start out the process with a structural deficit. And that's always from a macro level, a pretty big challenge. The school department has revolving accounts, has other special revenue accounts that we, um, certainly all use to make up and to fund our entire request. So those, there's all, there's a limit to that type of revenue that we can bring in on an annual basis. So our, our federal and state grants tend to be relatively flat. Most of those grants have been entitlement grants. We have new grant opportunities, which we'll talk about because of the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency relief grants that we're looking at, um, that we have this year and that we're looking at some available federal grants for next year related to COVID-19. But some of those revolving accounts, the, the, the years of fees and the tuitions we charge for some of the optional programs are fairly limited or been fairly flat. So that, that's a, a challenge that we work with every year. And then our contractual obligations, certainly, um, I think it's, it's, when you look at a school department's budget, it's always, uh, salaries make up the largest piece of the pie and, and that's the case this year. Our salaries make up eighty-three point seven percent of our total budget request. And that's a pretty typical statistic when funding a, a school department budget. So these kind of contractual salary obligations from year to year to, to, to fund, uh, really relatively modest, you know, cost of living adjustments for, to meet these contractual obligations with, with our, our staff, our existing staff is, is always, um, you know, makes up a, a big part, piece of that, of that annual required increase from year to year. And then certainly we've talked about the COVID-19 pandemic, um, and the impact on the educational process this year and some of the challenges as we look towards not only the spring, if we look to reopen and go, go back to a, a, you know, full in-person model and, and we, we look to it next year in the fall. There's still so many variables and unanswered questions. Hopefully we'll get answers really soon and, and be able to trial some things this spring. But we do know there's a potential of a lot of new costs that could arise. There's still a level of uncertainty. Certainly the impact on some of our special revenue programs, the things that we charge fees for athletics, extracurricular, busing, some of the optional tuition-based programs for full-day kindergarten and half and full-day preschool. There's still some level of uncertainty there of, of what would the participation be at and what could that impact, um, in terms of the revenue? And, and that does have, as you'll see a little bit later in the presentation, an impact on our, our general fund request as well. When we look at our revenue sources, um, just really quickly, this is again, no surprise here that a community like North Reading, the biggest piece of the pie from the revenue coming in is from local property taxes making up over seventy-three percent. Um, our state aid, which is chapter 70 and unrestricted local government aid makes up the next largest piece of the pie. Again, North Reading is very, you know, generally very flat state aid. It doesn't change very much at twelve point six percent. Some of the local receipts on the town side that I spoke of earlier, again, very, generally very flat at about seven point three percent. And then these are our revolving accounts, which is the, the federal and state grants and some of the, the fees that we do collect, like busing, athletics, extracurricular are the main ones. Uh, we do charge rental, um, income as well to rent school space, which is again, that impacted by COVID-19 virus. Uh, make up the next piece of the pie. So that's just from a larger picture, certainly the, the revenue breakdown that's coming in to fund the school department budget. When we look at our, our, our budget drivers, our main budget drivers for fiscal year '22, uh, there's really four main budget drivers at play. And the first is our contractual salary obligations. I spoke of that earlier. You know, personnel services and salaries make up eighty-three point seven percent of our, um, FY22 level service budget request. Again, includes the costs. It'll make sometimes step, step advancements, lane movement, other contractual increases for staff. So when we look to, to kind of fund what we know are those annual increases, you know, already that's kind of a big, a big piece of the pie. We need about three, about three percent to, uh, of an annual increase over fiscal year '21 to fund some of those known contractual salary increases. When we look at our operational fixed costs, uh, these are fixed costs, um, to continue to maintain our, our buildings, our four pool campuses, um, you know, various contractual lines like HVAC, um, equipment, plumbing repairs, boiler repairs, grounds and landscaping, maintaining the wastewater treatment facility, our regular bus transportation contracts. Certainly, you know, rates get adjusted every year and things like our utility expenses, electricity, gas, water, certainly, you know, phone services. All those things tend to go up every year and to adjust the budget for some of these operational known increases is certainly a, a, always a big driver of, of every school department budget. Then when we look to this third item here, right, we refer to NRPS 2025. That is our strategic plan, um, the new initiatives that we're trying to improve the overall, you know, educational, um, you know, process in, in North Reading, as well as adjustments that we needed to make this year as a result of COVID-19 and that we see carrying forward in, into next year. So, um, there were areas that we certainly focused on this year and that new, new positions that we brought in, uh, in the current fiscal year. For example, a school nurse, um, some custodians to help with, uh, cleaning and touch point cleaning. Certainly technology technicians to support the one-to-one program, which we had to really, um, increase and, and ramp up to, from a K to kindergarten through grade 12. So those have been instrumental. We don't see the need of those physicians going away, as, as you'll find out a little bit later on in the presentation. And then certainly other needs that we spoke of a little bit earlier to address the social emotional needs of students, to provide some academic intervention, support and additional tutoring needs, as well as some reading specialists and other needs we needed as well that, that is a part of our strategic plan. Special education costs, both in district and out of district, is always, um, a big part of, uh, the, the conversation when developing a, a school department budget. The special education costs typically make up about twenty-two to twenty-three percent of your total budget request. And that is the case as we look towards fiscal year '22. So we actually are anticipating, at least on our, the out-of-district costs of special education to go, to go down next year. We are anticipating a decline in the number of students that would be educated outside the district. As well as we do anticipate that the state circuit breaker program, which is a program that does work to reimburse, the district for, you know, certain special education expenses like out-of-district tuitions and transportation costs that qualify. We do anticipate that we'll have more reimbursement funds available next year. So those things are certainly at play. So those are the four major budget drivers. When you get into the numbers, I think you can really see when you look at our fiscal '22 total requests and how that compares to fiscal '21. I believe if you can kind of look at these, these changes and increases and really see the, uh, four budget drivers I just spoke of at play. So we are looking at a, a fiscal year '22 budget request, um, which we're considering this to be a modified level services budget of thirty-four million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. That is a little over one point seven million dollar increase over fiscal year '21 or a five point four percent increase. These are the, these five major expense categories. You can kind of see the, the changes when you compare fiscal '22 to fiscal '21. Salary is around five point six percent, which can be contributed to as I said, as I spoke to earlier. A portion of that certainly are fixed salary obligations for, to meet, you know, co, collective bargaining and contractual obligations with our existing staff. And then a portion of that is either a continuation of physicians added this year, um, school nursing, custodian, custodial staff, technician, and then additional staff driven by our strategic plan and to really address the needs that we foresee next year to have, uh, really the largest impact on, on, on the student's, um, educational experience. Instructional expenses are up twenty-two point three percent in this request. I think the most, largest factor in that increase is the result of the need to really increase our technology line items. Uh, we had to certainly increase our devices, increase our, increase our instructional software. In some ways to address the hybrid model and remote learning. But we don't really see a lot of those needs going away. We still think the instructional software that we brought in, that's become part of our curriculum, goes at a renewal cost to it. We have to kind of continue those services. Support of our one-to-one environment is gonna cost some money from a network standpoint and from an infrastructure standpoint, as well as from a device standpoint. And many of the technology devices we added into the classroom, um, you know, networking equipment, um, document cameras and so forth, we, we see a need for. So that's driving, that's really driving a lot of that instructional expense increase. Operations and maintenance, kind of a modest increase there, but again, that's to adjust the, the known increases to our, our building maintenance contracts, grounds contracts, wastewater treatment plant is certainly a part, a part of that, as well as our utilities. Transportation, uh, this is actually an area that based on the, the most latest information and some of the decisions that we made at the last meeting, I do anticipate when we move through this process, will be, there'll be an area of savings here. So right now we're looking at about nine point six percent increase over last year. I think we'll see some savings because we have some favorable results of the bid. So this is a big year, as you know. And, um, I think we'll be able to reduce this line item as we move through this process. Because of the regular transportation contract brings came in pretty favorable when we went out to bid this year. From an out-of-district tuition standpoint, as I said earlier, we are right now anticipating a decline in that, in, um, the number of students being educated outside of the district, which I think is in part driving this reduction in this line expense category. The other piece is the circuit breaker piece, uh, which is the amount of additional revenue we have through. The other piece is the circuit breaker piece, which is the amount of additional revenue we have through the state program as an offset. Again, I think the biggest area of sort of volatility or what is kind of the biggest variable, this is always an area that can change very quickly. So as we move through this process, we'll be looking at the latest information and see if this is a situation or is a line item that could change very quickly. I just wanted to, I think everyone's kind of, well, weird that could be the case, but just wanted to again, remind everyone of that. So then we look at some of these couple of these pie charts, kind of where are the funds being allocated? How are the funds being spent? I mentioned earlier, salaries and compensation make up eighty-three point seven percent. That statistic has really not moved in the last ten years. It's it's very, very common statistic. You look at any kind of school budget across the state, across the Commonwealth, you're going to see that that number be about eighty-three percent. So then when you look at what the remaining, you know, breakdown from expense categories and really, if you look at an additional sixteen point three percent or so, a cost that are made up of expenses that I would consider are mostly fixed, and that's our contractual services line, our cost of our utilities, the cost of transportation, the cost of out-of-district tuition. You know, these all add up to, you know, over thirteen percent. So when you add salaries and some of those known contractual fixed costs in those areas, we're really looking at a very small percentage of the pie, three, three and a half percent remaining, that I would consider is more discretionary spending, and that's certainly classroom materials, supplies, textbooks, technology, professional development expenses. Certainly, you know, areas we're looking to move towards driven all by our strategic plan. So certainly, we're trying to fund a thirty-four plus million dollar budget. But when you look at some of that beyond the fixed cost expense, we're really looking at a small piece of that pie, about nine hundred thousand to a million that were really, is almost discretionary, about that three percent or so. I think this this chart does certainly indicate that. Another way of just looking at the pie and where the funds are being allocated, certainly instructional services, the largest piece of the pie, and that's certainly a good thing. The cost of our classroom teachers, the cost of our classroom textbooks, materials, technology, everything being spent to educate the students directly in the classroom, our specialist costs, directly classroom teachers, student support, personnel, paraprofessionals, certainly has the largest piece of that pie, and that's how it should be. Only three point three percent is what we call administrative or district leadership. So cost for business operations, human resource operations, administrative oversight. The three point three percent is less than the state average, which is generally about four percent. So we're doing a good job kind of controlling those administrative costs. Then about nine point eight percent, again, fixed operational, building, utilities, maintenance, grounds, snow removal, custodial, janitorial services, and then four point seven percent in that out-of-district tuition cost number. So this is kind of, this sort of gives you an indication of how the funds are being allocated. So now we get into kind of the priority positions, staffing positions that we are, the administration at this point is recommending to the committee for consideration as we look to fund FY twenty-two budget. The first table here is what we would consider positions, again, I spoke of these earlier, so I'm going to focus pretty quickly. Staffing positions we added this year that were really to directly address new needs as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic that we think we're going to need next year. We're dealing, I think COVID certainly changed a lot. And these are three point five FTE positions that are going to be really, have become a lot of, of just our everyday operation of what we do. And they're really focused in three main areas, continuing to support the health and safety of students, staff, the school community. Having this Florida school nurse has been instrumental this year, and we certainly know that that's going to be very much needed next year as we look to the future. We added the custodial staff to help cover the additional, you know, lunch periods that were going on amongst the three elementary schools, the middle school and high school, that was needed. This additional touchpoint cleaning, additional sanitation and disinfectant that's needed. We don't see that entirely going away. I know the science is changing every day, it could look different, but certainly, this is the position we feel is very much important. It needs to be kind of that continuum of services next year. We really can't say enough of how important this, these data technicians have been. These are two thirty-hour-a-week positions, total one point five full-time equivalent workers. They have been instrumental in the operation this year in terms of troubleshooting issues. Technology has just been, as everyone knows, so important to, one little thing goes down, it has a huge disruption to the educational process in the classroom. And these technicians have been instrumental in supporting the one-to-one environment, getting into the classroom, troubleshooting any type of issues very quickly, making sure there's working networking equipment, working smart boards, working technology to not kind of minimize any of that interruption. So that is really instrumental and certainly going to be needed next year. I talked a little bit about our offsets and our federal and state grants, and I mentioned that we have some additional offsets in the federal grant level because of COVID-19. So we have a lot of COVID-19 money this year because that we got very quickly, that we've spent the majority of that. When we look till next year, we know right now that we have something called SR two, federal money of about two hundred and ten thousand dollars that is going to be available really through fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So that's fiscal, all of next fiscal year, school year, and then the next school year beyond that. So we're trying to try to be a little strategic in how we spend that funding. Certainly, the the way that funding has to be spent is certainly related to the COVID-19 virus. So these are positions that were added and to continue our efforts to provide a health and safe environment and to improve technology and to address the COVID-19 pandemic. So we we had planned in this initial draft of the budget to spend half of that money next year and offsetting these positions added because of the pandemic. And then we have access to spend about half of that money next year to try to avoid that funding cliff scenario that we all speak of when we get an influx of one-time money. Those of you that were around in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, you know, education, we had that that last economic recession area. There was a lot of that one-time money being funded and districts were trying to avoid that scenario. So this this approach would allow us to kind of just sort of, you know, not potentially have to shift two hundred and ten plus thousand dollars back into the general fund in one year. And then we look at our new positions driven by a strategic plan. I think it's certainly the focus on the social emotional needs of students. We've talked about that earlier. Dr. Daly did a great job speaking to that, and there were some great questions by parents earlier about where children's needs are. North Reading is not alone that this is certainly going to be the biggest need and the biggest focus as we look towards next year and as a result of where children are from our social connection standpoint as a result of having some of those, you know, those lack of student connections because of the, because of the COVID-19 virus. So we feel these two school adjustment councils, one for grade K through five and one for grade six through twelve, is really a pressing need for student support. Apparently, there's only one full-time school adjustment counselor serving six hundred and sixty students at the high school. These counselors, if funded, would be instrumental in addressing the student mental health and wellness needs of all students, K through twelve. The role of school adjustment counselor is extremely impactful, one at the elementary and secondary school level. It will certainly, this will allow not only for responsive services, but its key in developing programs that are proactive rather than reactive. These positions would be essential in addressing, again, that's most social emotional needs of all students, which certainly, as we all know, has been heightened due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So certainly, those are the highest of priorities. And then this educational data specialist position would really support all administrators and teachers in using data to make more informed decisions. The position would serve as a coach and would assist classroom teachers and administrators on the use of data from various databases, as well as various local data collection tools, to help better analyze that data and then just make better decisions. They would also work in classrooms to work with groups of teachers and analyze grade level comment assessment. They would guide teams of administrators in compiling data on student behavior, on attendance, on performance, to really connect that data to the educational process to help just better train and inform educators throughout the process. So a very important position. All three of these positions have been part of our strategic plan for a number of years, and I think it's fair to say they've been certainly reprioritized to the top of the list as we address certainly the impact of COVID-19. Not shown on here, just because we don't have a full-time equivalency attached to it, but we've certainly allocated funds for additional academic intervention tutors at the elementary level. So we actually have remote learning specialists, remote learning aides currently working in the district that we added as a result of COVID-19 to help facilitate that remote learning process that work come to and work in in the school district, that they help facilitate that the hybrid model. This, we would actually reallocate that to sort of academic intervention tutors, specifically at the elementary level to help help that any of those gaps that Dr. Daly spoke of early, kind of address those very quickly on in the process and provide that additional academic support. There's additional increases to some existing staff for reading specialists, also kind of built into the budget request as well to help certain schools in certain areas identify those students in need of additional support as quickly as we can. Yes?
Michael, sorry, I'll keep most of my comments today, but just one quick comment on what you just said. With the, you said we've had these positions for a number of years on the wish list, but the data specialist was actually a position that wasn't funded in the past, and that was a cut over previous years. Am I correct?
So correct, a little bit, so we've kind of re-titled the position. So we did have a sort of a, I think it was a data facilitator position, sort of certainly a little bit more involved in sort of state reporting and meeting our state report requirements. So this is shifting that and making it a little bit more kind of educational, a little bit more data analysis there, a little bit more coaching of classroom teaching. But the funding was there, and it's just kind of shifting that that disposition to what the need is. Great, great question, though. So then we get a few more slides, I'll try to move quickly. So just really in summary, this is what the ask is, thirty-four million, three hundred, three fifty-two, one one seven. Again, a little bit over one point seven million dollar increase. That's from the general fund, the appropriation quest. As I spoke of earlier, the budget is made up of a lot more than that to make, you certainly have federal state grants, we have those revolving accounts. Those look to fund an additional three point two million dollars. So when you really look at the whole picture of what's being funded, you're really at a little bit little with thirty-seven point six million dollars, but then there are certainly other, as everyone that attends and is tuned in to our our monthly meetings, you're well aware that we accept a variety of school committee donations averaging about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis. That's from our PTOs and our support groups, but also from private donors. We have, about a month or so ago, we accepted a forty thousand dollar gift from the International Church in in town. And so we accept these donations, and that certainly helps provide the North Reading educational experience and improve and enhance that as well. And then our PTO and PTAs, their in-kind gifts in their annual budgets to fund enrichment programs, to fund class field trips, to fund technology replacement, and a variety of things that the PTOs do on an annual average of seventy-five thousand dollars. All of these go into work and make the, you know, the full, the full piece of the pie of what funding is going into the North Reading educational process. So again, just another way of looking at it between salaries and expenses and what the offsets are. That's thirty-four million, three fifty-two, one one seven. Just a little snapshot for folks that are just trying to understand how all the funding kind of fits in. You have the total funding requests that I mentioned earlier, were really up to like thirty-eight million dollars. The general fund, which is the amount we go to town meeting for and ask for the town contribute, local contribution to support. This evening, we're presenting that budget to be a little over thirty-four point three million. So that's the local contribution taxes, local receipts, and then state aid, Chapter Seventy-eight, all help support that piece of the pie. And then our special revenue funds, as I mentioned, federal grants, state grants, our revolving funds, funds that we charge user fees for, and then other special revenue funds like our gift donations. You can see some of the allocation of that as I just referenced on the previous slide. Here, just as a little snapshot, this is coming from the state radar, data collection tool that are out there and available on the DECE website. FY twenty available wasn't quite ready to be published yet. But just to kind of shows you again, the majority of our revenue, as you just saw on the previous slide, is made up of our general fund requests. Federal straight grants make up a smaller piece of that pie. Might be a little bit bigger in fiscal twenty-one because we have some of that SR, that emergency relief funding available. Revolving accounts from tuitions we charge, user fees we charge, rental revenue we take in is a little bit of a larger piece of the pie. And then when you look at our Chapter Seventy-eight, which is the black line, this is what the educational process, state aid that we take in from from the state Chapter Seventy program, really relatively flat. So not a lot of movement, it's been about seven million dollars. We're in a situation in North Reading where we don't, we're not going to see significant increases in state aid. So we can't really rely on our, that Chapter Seventy-eight to to cover new initiatives and so forth. That's been a relatively flat, very minor increases from year to year. And then the state obviously issues a required net school spending amount, amounts that we're required to spend. That's that white line, so we spend more than that. And I'll just say, North Reading is really very much like every other community. The majority of communities spend about twenty-five or thirty percent more than what they're required to spend. And that certainly is the case in in North Reading as well. This next chart just kind of shows you, again, some of these programs that we take in revenue from. Certainly, bus transportation from a regular transportation process, athletics, extracurricular, performing arts, kindergarten, preschool. So this is what the user fee contributions, so parents often might wonder, you know, I know I'm paying a user fee, I'm paying tuition. What, what is this money going to? What, what is it being used for? And it's really, legally, we have to be used for that direct cost that the program is supporting. So we take, this is what we kind of annually have taken in from the various optional programs that we charge user fee and tuition for. One area here that's highlighted is the kindergarten program. So within this budget request is a proposal that would permanently reduce the full-day kindergarten tuition amount from four thousand, two hundred and fifty, which it was last year, and it was adjusted this year for a variety of reasons, down to three thousand, five hundred dollars. And that would, that's included the registration fee, everything involved, would be a total full-day kindergarten tuition of three thousand, five hundred. So that would, you know, cause a reduction in that offset that we've had previously. But again, the administration fully supports that, and we've talked about it in the committee. It's been a longstanding goal, I have the school committee a budget goal to try to reduce user fees and tuition costs over time. North Reading unfortunately is on the higher list when you look at what our full-day kindergarten cost from a tuition is. I think we're up in the top three or four in the state. And, you know, unfortunately, we're in a situation where if we make a change, we don't get that influx of state aid income like some of the neighborhood communities that have been able to kind of move towards more of a free full-day kindergarten model in, you know, in previous years. So we would like to work towards that, and this would be our first step in in doing that, as we would see that. We would, we hope to sort of have some kind of a phasing approach where we would work towards having free full-day kindergarten in in North Reading. It's certainly financially unfeasible to do that all in one year because it would cost about over five hundred and fifty thousand to do that. But, you know, we think a phasing approach makes makes sense, and this would be our our first effort to to make good strides in doing that. And this would be, as we all know, this is what they're being charged this year. So it's not really actually changing, it's just keeping that constant, but not going back to the previous, previous tuition for previous years.
Michael, I'd like to ask quickly, does that mean that the, that previously the percentage of contribution was around sixty percent?
Yes, it does. So ideally, in a perfect world, these will all be about fifty percent. And, you know, some of it will be a little less, some of them will be a little bit higher. You know, some of the costs to run certain programs like the busing, for instance, the busing, the marketing and busing, as we know, the rates really have increased over the last three or four years. So we haven't changed that user fee in a number of years, so that has kind of gotten off, off that ratio. But yeah, that would be fair to say. Some of the athletic costs have just been going up, the needs of that program year to year. So we have, again, we haven't made major changes to that user fee. So we, at one point, we were close to fifty. So we, at one point, we were close to fifty-fifty and we've kind of, that's been reducing each year. But again, we don't want, we certainly don't want to increase user fees and tuition costs to families. It's not a goal of ours and we're just, we're trying to make everything work. And this is certainly a big, big piece that allows us to offer these programs and offer the education, the fine arts, performing arts, the athletics, student clubs. But we're in a situation where obviously you have to charge a user fee to do that. Really quickly, so our request this year, that five point four percent. You can see what we've actually officially been funded, which is the green bar graph. The yellow represents our proposal. So obviously, we have to work through this process and work closely with the town. So the last, the ten-year average is about three and a half percent. So we're about two percent higher than that this year. There's certainly a lot of needs that have arisen that we feel like we can navigate strongly for some additional funding for next year. But as we all know, it's going to be work to do to achieve the budget request that's being presented this evening. So this is cost avoidance. I can have two more slides. Just to, I think I talk a lot about these each year, but we work very hard to avoid and reduce and save in any areas that we can. So from an expense budget standpoint, we try to purchase from the most, you know, state bid list and get the biggest educational discount for supplies, materials that is available out there. We certainly work hard to control our utility costs. We are part of purchasing consortiums, we regulate our, modulate our boilers and our occupancy schedules. We moved to LED lighting throughout the district this year. And we're paying that down over, of course, over the next five years. But that's all going to control those utility costs. We're part of two collaboratives for special education that helps us control some of our district tuition and transportation costs. We have a shared transportation model for students that need to be transported outside the district to schools. And that helps us share the cost of transportation with those fourteen other member communities. So we always are trying to design and customize the programming to always meet the need of students and when appropriate, educate students within the district. Food service program, obviously, the food service program, as we all know, was performing very, very well. This has certainly been a disruption and I think they responded really well to, under the circumstance. And we get a weekly, you know, testimonials coming in from parents about how pleased they are with the food service program this year, particularly the grab and go program. So we continue to pursue all available funding options. Grants, federal reimbursements that were available this year. We all know that the hope, every student is eligible for a free lunch this year. So certainly lunch, breakfast, we entered an app, school snack program this year. So we're really trying to maximize our federal reimbursement and we're trying to manage those costs as best we can this year. Certainly hopeful that things will return to a more normal situation as we, as we work towards next year. Maintenance operations, just trying to limit the need for outside contract work where appropriate in these areas. And we've done a pretty good job at controlling that and doing that this year. We're going to look to do more of that. And then just really caution vigilance of everything that we do from our daily operations. Certainly E-rate funding, federal program that helps us offset internet costs and technology costs. We pursued all options there. And then I mentioned earlier, LED lighting. We continue to look at solar. I'll put update a little bit later in the meeting on where solar stands. So what do we have, what do we get from the FY twenty-two budget? The budget that meets all of our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. It allows us to meet increases in fixed operational costs for our contracted services. It maintains and adds staff to continue to provide educational style, student-teacher ratios, especially at the elementary level. We maintain those ideal flat side guidelines. We enhance operational instructional technology needs of the district, certainly adding technicians. Maintain the adequate health and safety services for all students, staff, and community. I think the addition of the school nurses is essential to allow us to do that. Addressing social, emotional, mental health needs of all students, certainly the addition of the school adjustment counselors at the elementary, secondary level, and addressing the operational needs of all five schools. The addition of that custodian was essential there. And then from an expense standpoint, continuation with that district one-to-one program in grades K through twelve. You saw that increase in instructional services. That was mainly technology-driven. There was other increases to address needs from the sanitation and health standpoint. We don't see all of that going away. We think we're still going to be sanitizing, could potentially still be needing PPE and so forth. So that, some of those lines were adjusted. And then certainly lines were adjusted to continue that preventative maintenance approach to maintaining our private schools and surrounding campuses. So where do we go from here? We're going to discuss the ongoing discussion with the finance planning team. There's additional opportunities for the community and for parents to get involved and get, get, become aware of what is being funded, of what is being requested. A budget webinar is on March twenty-sixth. We'll continue to have much, we'll do our school committee budget workshops. A public hearing will either be April twelfth or April fifteenth, but they will both at the end of tonight. School committee is due to vote on or about May sixth, and town meeting is on June fifth. So with that being said, we're going to talk a little bit longer than I was hoping, but I'll open it up in any questions or discussion.
Thank you very much, Michael. Excellent presentation as always. A lot of work goes into this and it is powerful too. The, before I just go to the committee members, I know there's one question that was typed in. It's Capazudo asking, would the elementary and secondary school adjustment council positions be floating amongst the schools?
That's the idea, yes, that they would.
If there's one at the high school right now, would there be one at high school and one at middle school? Or that would, they would all float then? And how many are at the elementary right now?
There's none.
There's none at the elementary.
The elementary would float among the schools. And I believe the second one would be six, twelve. You'd still have one at the high school, which is working with the program a lot. And then you'd have someone to help out both middle and high school.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have lots of notes and questions, but I want to open up the night meeting up first. I have comments, questions?
Just very thorough, not only.
Diana?
I have the luxury of being in the budget subcommittee, so I feel like I've heard some of this before. And I'm going to hold the majority of my questions for the workshop, but thank you very much.
Rich?
Yeah.
Chris, anything?
Nope. Michael, as usual, he did an excellent job.
I have a few things just to kind of point out here. Number one, I just wanted to point out to everybody with the spent out of district placements. I mean, while it's important to educate our kids however they need, I just think a few years ago, the committee really put a lot of effort into getting a position at the school that really helped the look at this. And I think just since the opponent has been phenomenal in her role as director of student services and, you know, we've seen this is going to be the lowest number of out-of-district placements, you know, not kind of like in, you know, in the last ten or twelve years that are on the, that are listed here. Which, again, I mean, you saw a budget saving from that. And so that's important to note that there's been a lot of efforts made, try to educate our students within the district if possible. Just to point out, the one thing that I want to emphasize here, if you look at what's been requested. Like I tried to point out that one of the positions we're asking for is just getting a position back that we have already. All we're asking for, for the, you know, the very basic recommended one are things that are literally critical for COVID. You know, cleaning if there's, you know, then the ones that are just like our, our, our reach goals are our social, emotional learning that is, again, related to COVID. Now there, we didn't even put up the real request budget, which is what, fourteen point two positions, about a million dollars of extra position. None of this is advancing where we're at. This is literally just treading water and it's still a five percent increase, five point four percent increase. And so I just think it's really important, like, at times, we try to say we're going to do this and move this way and that way. We're treading water with this budget right now. We're literally just trying to address the needs that we see from COVID. And it, I mean, it's kind of sad that we can't do anything more than that, but, you know, that's where we're at. But I just think it's important to point out that that's all we're really doing within this budget is increasing. It is just directly related to COVID-related response.
I believe it's about two hundred thousand dollars, smoke.
Right.
Complete level services.
Correct. Question from Michael, the LED savings. I know with the LED project that was done, we're basically paying for it for a number of years from the savings.
Correct.
Essentially.
Yep.
At what fiscal year will we start seeing the savings of it?
So it's a five-year payback. So we technically wouldn't see that until fiscal year twenty-sixth. So we're still a little ways away. The hope is that the estimated savings is that would still be greater. So we would exceed what some of the preliminary, some of the estimates were of what the monthly savings would be. We haven't seen that this year. We've seen significant savings that was somewhat in line with what we had predicted on a monthly basis. But I also think with impacting that is that we haven't been opening these buildings. The operational hours haven't been typically what they have, what they, what they normally are in a normal year. We don't have groups in here all weekend. We don't have, you know, groups here till nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night like you would in, you know, pre-COVID in a normal year, which was some of what that saving was based on. We ran some of those numbers. So when that begins to go back to a more of a normal situation, I think we'll experience more. I mean, we'll spend a little more, maybe we'll experience more savings too.
Right. And then, so the school adjustment council, you suggested that the ratio is, right now, we have one for six hundred and fifty kids in the high school. What is the, what is the recommended ratio of, you know, adjustment counselors, you know? I do not, like, one, I thought I heard two years ago, like, one to two hundred.
So I don't nurse, when guidance counseling is happening, I think that's, that's sort of one to two hundred, one to three hundred ratio from the American Guidance Association that, so I'm going to, I mean, I haven't seen the school adjustment.
Yeah, we can look into.
Sort of a different position, but.
I will say that it functions much in the same way, though, as special education. You know, the number of students that we're able to keep in district through programs that we have with adjustment counselors and through counselors. It may not be a student in IEP or five oh four, but it may be a student with other needs. That these counselors being in our buildings and working directly with kids will pay dividends over time and certainly be a huge benefit to our students and staffs.
And I, and I, a couple more things. I know, I know full-day kindergarten is always a hot topic. I appreciate that we're making an effort here and I hope we can keep this in there where we're getting on. We're losing, by only reducing it seven hundred and fifty dollars, we lose almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. Hundred and forty-five, whatever that has to be made up. And so it's just, and as you said, going the rest of the way would be another about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I like that we're trying to make an effort for it and hope that we can get there. The one-to-one, the one-to-one, is that, to keep the one-to-one buying the, buying the computer, is that being funded in this budget or is that assuming something from CIPC?
So at the moment, it's, we do have funds in this budget to fund that. We don't, the CIPC process is still working through that, so we don't really know where it's going to stand. I think we'll know more as we get towards the public hearing. You know, where the CIPC is in that process to see if any adjustments would be necessary, you know, in that area.
Yeah, I'll just say again that, you know, the CIPC process has been great and it's been helping us to fund our original model, which was starting in seventh grade to twelfth grade. Because of COVID, every kid K to twelve and every teacher K to twelve has been using devices now every day. And we're not going to go backwards from that again. We talk about possible silver linings here, but we've, we've expanded what kids are able to do in the classroom. Every teacher now is using classroom and there's so many advantages to that for kids. So really, some of what we're talking about here is those devices that they're using now are five to six years old with the younger children. And as we know, you know, the old school thinking was you, you give the high school kids the devices and then they trickle down. You can't do that where everyone needs the most up-to-date software and video chats and all those things. So we really need to support many more grades. We, you know, we do think over time that we'll, we'll, you know, those devices are lasting and they're, they're working. But we certainly need to refresh this model. So that's where you see them.
And my last comment was just that, I mean, it's always frustrating at budget time because we want to do so much more and we see that the state aid is just not there to support it. You know, we need, we need more state aid to do it fully. But I appreciate everything that the town does because the town has been forward-thinking. The PSA has really helped with the keeping insurance costs in line. And, you know, the finance planning team, which, you know, Rich and I are members of right now, it has been very supportive. And so, you know, I do, I do think that even with a bad situation, I mean, it's sad that we're actually getting better funding this year because of COVID and we've gotten in years past. And it's just sad that we can't adequately fund the schools when there's not a pandemic happening. Now we're going to have to fill back because we have to stop and not we can, some of it. Thank you very much, Michael. Good, good. I hope they're on the meeting as always. More to come if anybody, if anybody wants to people that work here. Okay, next one, there should be a little quicker. First one is facilities master plan committee. Do you want me to talk about this then, Bill? Do you want me to talk about it?
Sure, you can have it.
So, I mean, right now Diana was on the facilities master plan committee. Though I know that they were, their work was paused for a number of months. It was supposed to be a one-year thing, but it's now going to go over till the next year. Diana hadn't actually pulled paper to run yet and we weren't sure if she was running or not. And so I know Abby Rover, who's the chair of that committee, had said that the work, there's going to be work being done before the elections, the meetings that are happening, and it's going to kind of go over till after the election. And so she just wanted to make sure that whoever was appointed, whether whoever was going to do that, would be keen to bond for that. And so we had put this on as a discussion point. Now you go running, that's great, can get here and hopefully you beat nobody, but.
Together, together, we're working, we're going to beat nobody.
But the, the, the question, I guess, is this will continue in the next year. And so most of the work will be done later on, but some of the preliminary stuff will be done now. So I just think we should talk about who wants to do this. I think it sort of lines up with kind of like CIPC stuff. It's like, it's discussing with the town. I don't think a lot has to do with the school, it's just looking at the master plan. I know Rich is already doing one thing with the town. So I think this is just a talk about who wants to do it because it's going to be for a lot of next year as well. So I don't know what people talk about. I don't know if you want to stay with something like that, Diana, or if that's not your cup of tea and other people have the desire to do it.
In the recent past, there's been one meeting request that came through for this that I wasn't able to make because of work. I don't know when they're being planned, what time of day. I think Abby is making the request specifically to be completely transparent because she wants to be on the committee. So I may have to get a be being on it if you want to be on, to be honest. I mean, it's too straight.
I don't care who's on the committee. I think if people want to be.
I don't know if I can make the times that they're, but I don't know if, did she indicate anything related to the time?
She didn't say anything to go on time.
No. I, I don't know when they are. I think we should maybe find out. I don't know if I matter to anyone else, certainly does me because I work full-time. But I just don't want to be a hindrance and not be able to go. That's the only thing.
It's just, again, to me, that they had some, some design people coming in, they're going to be a participation too. So.
Anyone that has been in the town work, I have no problem with that.
I know that, again, I know that your, your first term here, you got saddled with a lot of the town-related jobs. It's going to be a lot of work. So I know that there is express desire to maybe change up your appointment for your next term.
Yeah, I, if I do get elected for another term, I was going to advocate for a little bit of a mix-up of social and CIPC because of significant demands on time. It's weekly and it's during the end of the workday. And it has been a challenge for me, yeah.
I know, I know Rich is doing the one thing with the flex work and I know he's been a lot.
I don't know if that's, if that's an ongoing thing. I, I, pardon, I talked to, I talked to somebody and then that might be it for a while. I don't, I wouldn't consider that an obligation. But I, I, I'm. But I, I, I'm, I'm, you know, this would be something I'd be interested in, but I'm also, you know, happy much.
Well, but again, I, I actually think, I think it's good for school committee members to be involved in the town overall.
No, I, I.
And so I think it would be a nice way for you to meet some of the people in town as well, if you'd like. And so if, if you have a desire to do that, I mean, I, you know.
I think many of you have a, a great desire to.
I, I've already done it and it is, it's a great way to, you know, keep in contact and, you know, know what's going on in the town and stuff. So they're great.
And hopefully some exciting things going on with that. That would be, could be a part of.
So I would say it's the kind of thing that I definitely.
Yeah, I mean, if it's something that you're interested in, I think I would support you in, in, in doing that one, just because.
I think it makes sense though too, if you don't mind jumping over. If you are on the master plan, it probably makes sense to be on CIPC because it's kind of hand-in-hand, so.
We can talk about that in May, but yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, this is not a one-year, right?
It's a three-year, a return.
But it's up, it's up this.
It's up for me, yeah.
That's a deal.
I was just gonna say the suggestion was it, it, it's to fill this through May for this year because no one's on there. Then we would be free.
Yeah, but yeah, but again, the idea is I think the same, it's the same person.
It would be the person who cares for that. Possibly, yeah, and this is no, it doesn't appear to be any risk of.
Uh, yeah.
Third person running. Be assured that anyone else would be, I'm happy to do it.
I mean, if, if it's of interest to you, like I, I think.
It is.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, yeah, I would support that. I mean, I think.
The other thing is that it's, it's somewhat easier now, but I don't know if we want to, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's generally true, so.
Rich, do you need to know the times of the meetings because of work, or do you think you'll have the flexibility to handle it?
I'm pretty flexible in terms of, I, I don't get bought into any, any, too many times.
Okay, that's good.
Let's totally go for it.
I would support that.
Have fun.
So, um, so do you wanna have a motion to appoint Rich as the member of the Facilities Master Plan Committee?
Up until the month of May.
Yeah.
High school nominee.
Second.
Well, we didn't ask Chris if he wanted to do that.
I just see him chiming in.
One more in, please.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Janine.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Chris. Rich.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass it by zero.
Thank you, Rich.
Congratulations, Rich. I'll tell Abby and then be yelled at by Abby probably. I'll just say Rich, Rich out, Rich, Rich outmaneuvered me to get to the decision.
That being noted for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have Secondary School Building Committee. May press, either Janine or Dr. Daly can tell us what this is about.
Sure.
Would you like me to?
Sure, go ahead.
So the SSBC for many years has, has functioned in our district. We, we took a look at this along, I think the Facilities Master Plan also goes thinking about other committees as well. I think that what we need to do is officially appoint myself as the superintendent to serve in this committee as, as a representative. Mr. Sunny Campania also taking over for Mr. Hardaker. And at this time, Janine is the only school committee member. So Mr. Chukurichi, who's the chair of this committee, has recommended myself, Mr. Campania, and a second school committee member to be on the SSBC. We don't see there being a tremendous amount of meetings at this time. I know this was a committee that met so much over the years, obviously, but it is important to have it there. It's a little bit different of a group. So Mr. Kruchi is partly writing and accepting resignations for people who are no longer either on the committee or on the group. But in addition to tonight's recommended appointment, they actually need to be appointed as a joint school committee and select board meeting that we would need to schedule. I don't believe we can keep long. And it looks possibly like when this was done in the past, you may have just joined the select board meeting for a certain amount of time for that agenda item and then that, that looks to be how it was. I don't know if anyone was part of that.
Trying to remember and I, you know, because Kathy left, John came on.
Yeah, it was, when Mr. Woodprett was added was the, was the one, it's a 2014 when that happened. It was quite some time ago.
I'm trying to remember that.
You just attend.
Well, you were actually signed up because we didn't have a town administrator.
So we needed someone to.
Right, and so you're technically.
That's how we went to a select board meeting.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking you maybe didn't need to be a, a special meeting. You just were code board members and we did that item and then we moved on. So that's probably what we'll do. But I think tonight you could make the recommendation to appoint hopefully me, Mr. Campania, and then the other school committee member to serve with Janine.
Well, just a little bit of a background. I've been on it since April of 2004. And the last meeting that we had as a group was May of 2018. So you're not gonna be too, too busy at this point in time if you want to recommend. It's just more of a, I think the state has mandated you need X amount of people in this, you know, area and so.
And, and, and what are the chances of getting deposed if you're on it?
You won't. I was actually supposed to be and have not, so, but.
And you, and you are actually there all that time. We should definitely, we should probably get Chris on it, cause he hasn't been around, he's been around the shortest. So there's no chance of him being.
Good theory, Rich.
How is it for what's the, very?
It tells the, it's dissolved. Yeah, so like if you run and you are here and it hasn't, and you're the person put on the committee and it's not dissolved in five years, but you stop, then the school committee would have to.
Appoint someone else.
Right.
And, and it's not dissolved because we're pending.
Litigation, yeah. And.
There's still a little bit of suspense or something of the sort.
Uh, very little.
Very little.
Yeah, depends on how those litigation.
Do you know?
Yeah.
They get more say in the litigation than it's like.
No.
I mean, I don't care.
No, this hopefully has no, the SSBC has no say over it because it's, the select board has brought this claim.
We're putting a, we're putting a name in.
Yeah, it's just, it's whoever it is.
If somebody wants to do it, they can, I'll do it if they want.
I'd vote for Scott because he said he's gonna re-up.
Yeah, it's litigation headed.
Maybe you another way to run it.
Yeah, there you go.
Not that I need it, but I make my own.
Have you already read it and everything?
Well, I read it, I read the law.
Yes, there you go.
Yeah, perfect.
I did read the law.
So I move, if I may, I move that we appoint Dr. Daly to serve as superintendent representative, Mr. Campania to serve as facilities director, and Scott Buckley to serve as a school, as an additional school committee member on the, that we recommend that joint select board, the school committee meeting appoint those three.
Second. Second, perfect. Okay, roll call vote, Rich.
Aye.
Janine.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. You'll work to schedule a meeting for the official.
I'm a loser and I go to some of the select board meetings anyway, so. Okay. Second, well, I mean, we, if we do it on a Monday night, we could probably just join in anyway from here. Second reading of policy. Am I gonna say let Janine lead us in the second reading?
No, I, I'll, I'll let, uh, yeah, sorry. I'll let Chris take it.
You were so nice last time to let me do it. You, you take it this time.
You want, you want me to, all right. Um, I'm like, sorry, to make the recommendation to move to approve the second reading of the policy, J H F B dash R to keep, uh, and sorry, and keep the track changes as delineated in the document.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, Janine.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Anna.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass it by zero, thank you. Evaluation, are we only doing superintendent? We're not doing anything with school committees tonight?
No, school committee is the 22nd of May.
Superintendent Evaluation Update, who is reading, who is leading us in that?
Mr. Chris.
Chris, you are leading us in that.
Yeah, let me just pull up the, the document. I was just gonna say.
Wanna share your screen or not?
Um, yeah, I can share my screen. Hold on just a moment. Sorry, I.
You'll send the document. Did he have permissions, Chris, if I try?
He should.
Yeah, I just, I was in the wrong Google Drive. All right, here we are. Perfect. You know. Okay, let me know if that's working.
Coming, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, good news, Dr. Daly. We, we like you. So just to walk through this really quickly. We all went through and rated your progression for, as we know, for formative assessments. We're just looking to see, are you on target, off target, or is there something that hasn't begun? For your professional practice goal to employ the continued highest level of effective strategic leadership to the North Reading Public Schools. Superintendent will continue to engage in and support professional development activities that will develop the skills to strategic and strategy development, data analysis, professional leadership, leadership team development, and school committee superintendent relations. Dr. Daly submitted a few examples of things that he's been doing to move forward in this. They're available in this window for superintendent's comments. I'll just read some of the comments of the members of the committee. Mr. Buckley felt Dr. Daly's excelled in his role as leader of the district. He's also been an integral part of this broader community by collaborating with other superintendents to develop standards for reopening our schools. And also noted Dr. Daly portrayed exemplary strategic leadership in the planning and execution of our school's reopening. I also feel confident that he's met or exceeded the key results he outlined for himself in this area to warrant an on-target status. Would any members of committee like to?
Call out individually, so I call them scared.
Sorry about that. But if you'd like to add any comments for goal number one. Okay, very well. For student learning goals, superintendent will work to create the conditions necessary for all students to achieve at the highest levels in a hybrid learning environment. By the end of the 2020-2021 school year, the superintendent will review each of the school improvement plans to the five schools and collaborate on the individual goals of the principals of each school. Strong collaboration with school principals and other administrators on development of administrator goals, activities, and benchmarks will serve to establish a framework for elevating student achievement through targeted efforts. And noted here is that the school improvement plans are coming into alignment, progress made. Of course, there's still some work to do. Uh, any other comments from anybody on the committee? Okay. Great. Uh, for district improvement plan, superintendent will use his findings from his first year in the role to facilitate the development of the school's district's new strategic plan, N R P S 2025. A strategy for the future that includes a shared vision and strategic direction for the North Reading Public Schools. The strategic plan includes identified objectives in the areas of teaching, learning, support services, and equity. The strategic plan will continue to serve as a blueprint for elevating student achievement and providing an overall advancement of the school district throughout the year, through the year 2025. Comments here, I think that Dr. Daly's on target here based on his commentary, but I'd be interested to see an update on N R P S 2025. I'm confident that Dr. Daly is on track to deliver on this goal by the proposed target of end of school year 2021. I would also like to have a view into the N R P S 2025 progress process. And just for any members of the public, of course, Dr. Daly, we don't need him to go into this now. This is just our chance to give him some organized feedback and indicate any questions we have. Any other comments on this topic from the committee or Dr. Daly, anything you'd like to add?
Sure, just that, you know, I'm happy to provide an update. We, we certainly were off track because of not having the time this summer during our retreat to do what we typically do. But we have been working on it at the administrative level. And we do have some things we can share out. I'm just still working on it, but I'm happy to come up with a time to present that, certainly me before July.
And I think, I think like, like you said here, from your commentary, it sounds like you are. It's just we're, we're trying to see if you're on track and it sounds like you are, but we just haven't seen it yet.
You have a neat graphic and everything, so we'll, we'll show you what we can work out.
Right. That's the idea behind why the grading here, grading is a poor word for it, but why this rubric is really set to an on-track or not-on-track and isn't any more detailed than that because it's our chance to find out what we need to learn more about and Dr. Daly's chance to, to kind of hear that feedback and then use it to inform going forward. Uh, okay, for the 2020-2021 school year, the superintendent will prepare the district for the challenges related to COVID-19 and explore, design, and implement school safety protocols and procedures needed for students and staff to have a successful year. Obviously, COVID has been number one, two, and three, priority number one, two, and three this year. Dr. Daly has helped North Reading become a model district in our area. There's still a great deal of work to do though, and as the goal now is to get all students back to full-time in the safest way possible. Dr. Daly certainly addressed the challenges related to opening schools in this COVID environment and implemented protocols and procedures that were well thought out and executed upon. Any further comments?
Clearly, I did not have an opinion.
You know, I opened the wrong one. There was one where I went through and.
No, I would not either.
For some reason, Rich doesn't agree, but everybody else thought you were doing great, Dr. Daly. The superintendent will continue to improve upon his communication through the use of social media, his blog, and other services, methods, communication, and his informational resources among and between the school district and the community. Use of surveys throughout the year to get feedback from the community has been excellent, is one note. Any further comments? Okay, that wraps up. The superintendent will support a district-wide investigation of social justice and equity for all students and staff and develop the steps of an action plan to be included as part of N R P S 2025. Notes are similar as before here. I think Dr. Daly is on target, but we know that social justice is a goal for all this year. But perhaps we could have an update for some examples on how this has come to fruition this year. And a note that Dr. Daly's communication throughout this year has been extremely effective. I also feel confident that he's addressed the social justice aspect of this goal as several aspects of the effort of representing to the committee on various occasions. Any follow-up comments from the committee or by Dr. Daly?
I have one.
Please.
What are you gonna do when COVID goes away?
Your day job?
So interesting. I, I will say, you know, one of the things that I'm, you know, that was sort of a result of COVID with the funding was I, you know, we extended to stop replacing myself, right, for the whole calendar year of last year. And I, I, I just wanna say how much my whole team, but especially having Mr. Colleen now as the assistant superintendent, it's just, all of a sudden I just realized, oh, it's like I have my right arm, you know, and Michael, my right, my left. You know, I've got this team of Mr. Colleen there. So he is going to share and present also. I think it'll be good for him to give an update now a few months in. And I, I hope that we can almost combine because I think what he's gonna be able to show you about what the administrative team is doing around social justice, the course that we're running, and a few other pieces, I think that would be a great update because really, for me, my goal here is to make this organized for everyone. And, and I'm, I'm just so thrilled. And part of what I'm trying to do with, with Mr. Colleen, my, my biggest goal is to try to give him the opportunity to do things that I never was able to do because I'm doing all these other things. I've been trying to take things off his plate, the fact that he's able to stay in district a lot this year. I think, I think it's fantastic. And he's done such a great job organizing some courses that, when I, when I joined the course the other day, just as a, I'm sort of auditing the course, right? But to see all of the teachers that are in there, all the administrators joining together to, to really unpack this topic is fantastic. So I think that so many of our, all of our educators have social justice as a goal, as well as teacher teaching and learning. And then many of them are taking this course. Others are doing book studies or there's so many things going on. But I think we can, we can probably address that through a joint presentation with shares as well. So I look forward to sharing that with you. But I think uh we can we can probably address that through a joint presentation when he shares as well. So I look forward to sharing that with you in the coming weeks. Not tonight.
Great, thank you. And uh that covers everything we had to say. We uh we find that you're on target for all of your goals and we appreciate all of the work.
Um, so this is to the whole committee, but also to Chris. So you did the superintendent's. I'll take over the school committee evaluation, which is due March twenty second. The meeting, so don't do like I did and wait till the last minute to do the evaluation.
I just want to say, I think we should think about a discussion in the summer about about whether it feels like the right thing to do to not remove our names. I think I did it when I was doing it, maybe that was what the students have. But it does feel like we should be speaking publicly about what we think about this, so.
You know, Rich, I had the exact thought and I I when we talked about it, Janine and I and Dr. Daly, and when I put up that that folder and the and the note, I had kind of gone with consistent what we've always said, which was to remove the names and uh I kind of goofed right right here. I should have put on the other file, didn't. But but when I was reviewing them today, I was thinking, oh, man. I think it's better if we if we keep the names. I think it's a bit more appropriate if we do. That said, it was still, uh, I didn't mean that in this very setting, but uh, but yeah, I agree going forward.
I actually thought I'd rated you not on target on one of them, so I rated us not on target.
Yeah, that's what I I just said as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Um, yeah, I will say one thing that was noticeable, like the school committee one was a lot more things and with yours was nice and clean and crisp with the five points, so.
Work in progress.
Yep. Okay, minutes. Mariana.
I move to approve, or I mean, sorry, accept the January twenty eighth open session minutes as written.
Hold second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote Janine.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I as well, I zero, thank you.
I'd like a motion to accept the February eighth twenty twenty one uh open session minutes as written.
Second, sorry.
Um, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote Janine.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
As well, that's by zero, very much. Budget update, Mr. Connolly.
Yes, thank you. So this giving you a quick, couple of quick updates. Um, first off, I think there was the student activity quarter two report, which reflects activities from the tour first through December thirty first of this fiscal year. In the report, as we've done in the past, you can see the certified, recognized account balances for the five schools. Um, and then I also included more activity of moving the high schools to other compounds, so. It was typical that we kind of pulled out in in record reports, um, you know, thirty to forty that day, so we ended that quarter. Um, not a lot, but two different pieces for it, but I'm really concerned where it gives us some questions.
Think I had any question? You are stopped tonight because we're good.
Okay, I I was looking at this very quick solar update. I didn't believe in the packet, but the next one, March twenty second, I have been continuing discussions with R M L D, um, going back really early February to late January. So I had a conference call webinar with the R M L D representative today. They presented to me sort of their preliminary presentation of what options could be. So they did an R F I that came out of the fall, analyze that. They're gonna come on March twenty second and make that presentation. There's still some more things I asked to follow up on. But the I represent to the full committee on March twenty second. Um, and essentially, they're they're trying to kind of just talk a little bit about sort of high-level solar, how how the program has worked, how how they try and what their objectives are in the community self-program, therefore participating in the obviously. Um, the I I asked them to kind of do a little bit of overview of the of the legislative process and how that's changed, how that's impacted the attendance, tax attendance, that market did change, really shifted them. Um, if you what the options are, um, they I asked them to kind of to do that as well. They are gonna walk through their perspective, what our options are based on the R F I that they got. And then they're gonna to talk based on what you could expect on each option from a revenue standpoint or a cost savings standpoint. Um, again, it's not firm numbers, but it's based on the R F I that they did and what the what the analysis was. Um, and then it's gonna kind of be a little bit like next steps and going to be over here. So that that is gonna happen on March twenty second.
One one suggestion on that. So when we ended up doing the L E D project, we had a sub, we had a, we had a small committee that included some people for finance committee. I don't know if you were planning on doing something like that again, but if so, it would be nice to invite those people. Particular thinking of like, I know you had Wayne as part of it before, and I know that um Don Calhoun was a was an important part of that. I wonder if he might want to just see if.
Yeah.
If we're gonna have those people again involved, it would be nice for them to hear the presentation as well, I think.
Yeah, so I I mean, maybe a little premature. I don't know if we're not really analyzing like official R F P or or even it's more like high level at that point. So it's more like news from what we see from our analysis, the information that we've done. These are what we see the options are, and then it's kind of be like, do we wanna, do we think, I think we have to decide after that presentation, in my opinion, do we feel like it's worth, like there's a project there that we think makes sense in North Reading, or you just tower it, like tools? And do we want to pursue like an official R F P at that point? The extent of it, you could be a joint R F P or just a school R F P. And then and actually develop a committee to evaluate that R F P results. Um, it certainly wouldn't hurt to have um more feedback.
I I think we should at least invite, you know, Don Calhoun, for example, and maybe Mike Gilberto, if there's gonna be a town side to it. And I think it might be nice to at least, again, if they're not required to go, but I think it would be nice to let them know that it's happening.
And Town Hall is gonna be in study. Town Hall is part of the, Michael and Burrow and I were involved that summer.
Yeah, I would let them know if they're coming to our meeting to present, in case they would like to attend, so they can at least do the presentation.
If there's a conflict, the meetings will be recorded. We can share the presentation, right? Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah, I think I think it would be nice just to, because again, I think Don, I think both of us have had really good, excellent feedback on different things in the past, and so including them early on would be nice. Even if they can't make it, they at least have the option. Thank you very much. Staffing, anything done for Daly?
None.
Kids in donations? Nothing right now.
This is the first time in a good couple of years that you didn't have anything.
Right.
That's odd.
Not like the trends are.
We've received a lot this year.
Oh, I know, I know. I just I just found it very strange.
Yeah, I guess. One thing about that, typically, I think in the previous years, I've done kind of a four to five update on the D T O in time. I'm I'm kind of decided it's just gonna happen at the, it's kind of so regular, I mean, a one presentation at the end. Everyone thought that would be good this year, D T O pressures.
Some committee update, finance planning team, that on our second, I think, pretty, pretty standard. We went through the revenue, not much has changed with the revenue. And we had the first look at the town request, the first look at the school budget. Um, we have a gap of, we just went over it. Actually, did we show the gap? I mean, we have a gap of maybe a gap of about eight hundred and something thousand, and then they have a similar gap, although it's it's worth pointing out that this is just the, they're at the stage of all the different town departments have made the request, so they haven't been cut down or anything yet. So we always start out sort of one step ahead because everybody gets cut down by Dr. Daly and Michael before, you know, they didn't get here. So with the town, there are all different departments that they get presented. We saw that information. The town administrator will make his recommendations from that later on, so. I think we're about one point six, combined, we're about one point six, one point seven million short. And I will just point out that in years past, we saw that big number and it wasn't, it wasn't really a real number because they hadn't put that stabilization in there yet. There's something they haven't put in there yet. This year, they put all that in right away. And so I don't actually think the revenue is gonna be all that much higher going forward. It might be a little bit like they they cut, they cut down the health insurance expense a little bit, went from seven and a half to six point six. So there's a little bit more revenue. Hopefully, there's a little bit more that can be found, but I think a lot of the stuff that in the past was held off on was already put in since then, so. We'll see.
Kind of, if I may, I can.
Of course.
I can actually, for the first time this year, give an update on a NOR CAM meeting.
Oh, nice.
Uh, they didn't have any meetings over the summer. They did a sort of test run on a virtual meeting in September, which they only was for the board member. Then since then, they started, since we started skipping meetings on Thursday, they had like two conflicts, these meetings, and then anyway, so I finally looked at one in the spread area. They're still there. They're still there and uh, so doing doing whatever they do. That's my update.
Good, great update.
Was it the day that this was? I'll tell you before we, yeah.
And I say, I mean, actually, I went to the C P A C meeting last night. It was their first, it was their first meeting, technically, I'm the liaison to that, and just a roundtable talking about what's coming up. The new the new co-president's there, so I'm going to not think Steve Burbick is at the running.
The co-president, Mrs. Busden and who else is the other one?
Yeah, the style like that. Mrs. Piper, I think.
Dr. Daly, it was the twenty fifth of February.
Okay, upcoming meeting, athletic subcommittee is March seventeenth at one P M, finance subcommittee is March seventeenth through thirty P M. Finance planning team is April sixth at eight A M. Administrative report, Dr. Daly.
A couple of things to share. The cyber security grant we received uh for the twenty twenty one twenty two school year, so we applied again after doing this for last year. They are telling us that it's gonna be up to fifty percent all new material and then some reinforcing of some very important materials. So we are planning to roll it out with all staff again, um, as we did this year. We just feel that it's it's just a different kind of safety and it's never been more important. That the the grant basically covers the cost of of the program. There are modules, as we've discussed, and there are phishing simulations. Uh, because as we know, if you don't know what you're doing and you click on something, it can affect your district and the, you know, the value added to to this knowledge is really hard to quantify because the cost of uh, you know, some kind of cyber attack ransomware on our on our district is is, you know, is very difficult to quantify. So we're going to have all of our staff participate again this year. Um, I wanted to just share, um, before I forget, also just a shout out to our nurses, especially all of our teachers and staff have done an amazing job. Our nurses with the pool testing have really gone above and beyond. We've also brought in a substitute nurse, Ms. Steele, who's been fantastic and really is working so well in the elementary. This Lombardi or Florida nurse is running the pool testing at the secondary level. So I I just wanted to make sure I shared that as well. They've been just outstanding uh this year, continue to to rise to every challenge because in addition to their regular everyday jobs, they're doing all the contact tracing, and now we've added pool testing on top of that. And they've met it with with grace and poise, and it's been highly, highly successful. And for them to keep everyone's uh, you know, nerves where they need to be and to to provide them with this data and update, it's been it's been outstanding. Parents have shared with me that they have nominated a teacher. Uh, it's it's quite an amazing letter. It's um a little bit lengthy. Do you want me to share it or do you want me to pull some highlights at this time, what would you say?
Good.
He says highlights. Do you want to forward it to a person?
I will definitely forward it to you. I will just say that uh this comes from the whole class of, I'll just start off with, it's November seventeenth. It was a great pleasure that we, the parents of Ms. Slaven's first grade class, nominate Ms. Andrea Slaven for the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. Ms. Slaven uh is a teacher at the Hood School, and she is a first grade teacher. Uh, we, as we are trying to adapt the unique circumstances of raising and educating young children during a pandemic, Ms. Slaven has been a true beacon in helping us navigate the course while we support our students emotionally and academically. Before the current academic year started, Ms. Slaven sent out a welcome email to her new student families, letting them know she was working on making a classroom safe, but still warm and inviting. She included photos to show students how the classroom would be set up, the desks six feet apart, social distancing mark in the floor. She also included photos of herself with and without a mask to give incoming students a level of comfort to be able to see their teacher's face and to know what to expect in the coming school year. They're also sharing um that, uh, I'll just share another paragraph. You know, Ms. Slaven is truly exceptional, compassionate, and talented educator who has helped our children thrive and flourish during these challenging times. She is the gold standard of teachers. It would be an excellent fit for this program. She's also our field hockey coach. She does a phenomenal job. I will say, you know, she is a highlight um when we visit our classrooms and seeing some of the work that she's doing. And for me, it was one of the first times that I saw, and many of our teachers are doing this, but with a first grade class, but teaching kids both home and and uh in in classroom, which I think, again, once we saw that it could work with even our youngest learners, it was something that was shared with many others. So um, I I really enjoyed working with her over the years and I was thrilled to see this. Um, email was then signed by all the folks in the class. So a really nice tribute that I wanted to share with you, Steve.
Nice.
And what was that a nomination for?
Uh, Massachusetts Teacher of the Year.
Will we will we know anything until much, it will be much later. This is a nomination. Right now, she's not, is she actually nominated for it or is it just?
She's nominated by the, they shared that that she has been nominated by the class, so they put this together. So it's not, she's not at this time, my knowledge, a finalist or anybody. I'm just I'm just sharing this administrative report.
Well, thank you. Um, any, I think there was one correspondence you wanted to read in.
I did want to share, um, Ms. Antolini had shared an email with the entire committee about, the the central question is about um what our plan is for reopening. I think that we did discuss that in a lot of detail earlier this evening. Um, the the message being that, you know, many children are struggling, not just academically, but mentally, socially, and emotionally. I think we certainly recognize that. Uh, I think we're all in agreement that that we're gonna do everything possible to bring students back. And we we will certainly have a plan, as we as we mentioned earlier tonight, forthcoming with most likely based on what we're gonna hear tomorrow, that April start date. And I feel that that's where we would probably set our target, even if somehow the the state changed its mind, but I think that uh we're gonna get some clear guidance tomorrow and hopefully some something arriving from the state in the very near future as well.
Go on. Thank you. Anything other than future business? Next meetings are Monday, March twenty second at six thirty P M, uh, which is the middle school presentation. We have a budget workshop Wednesday, March thirty first at three P M. Thursday, are we setting it for April fifteenth?
I'm suggesting Thursday, April fifteenth.
And does that work for people? Thursday, April fifteenth at six thirty P M, and that'll be the public hearing for the budget. And then Wednesday, April twenty eighth will be another budget workshop if we need. Any other things? And before ten o'clock? A motion to adjourn.
I'm so.
If you wait thirty seconds, it'll be ten o'clock.
Give me a second.
I see.
Okay. Vote, vote, Rich.
Aye.
Janine.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Chris. I'm an I as well. We are adjourned at nine fifty nine to you. Thank you, everyone.